Call of Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission Order, would you stand with me, please? I'll lead the prayer and Mike will lead the pledge. By them, please. Heavenly Father, we again thank you for this day and the blessings and opportunities that we have to come and serve our county, and we thank you for that, and we pray that you'll be with us in the meeting that we have today, and we thank you for the peace of this day, Heavenly Father, after the storms of last night, and we thank you for the peace that you give us every day. We pray that you just be with us in this meeting, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen? Call roll, please, ma'am.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Richie Boland. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Vincent Windrow.
Present.
Craig Lynch.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We're going to take a motion on approval over November 28th, minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I review those, find them in order, and move for their approval.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All opposed to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Plant bond extensions, colonial states subdivision, section 1A, bond extension for one year. You want both at the same time, or?
Could do both of these at the same time. Both of our extension requests are due to market conditions, and we recommend that you approve these extensions for one year.
Colonial state subdivision, section 1A, and Staghorn subdivision.
So moved.
Yes.
All opposed to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Site plan approval, Davis Vineyard and Winery.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Planning Commissioners will recognize this property as one that went through the zoning process toward the end of last year, was approved by the Board of Commissioners in November of last year. This is for, as the site plan says, a vineyard and winery located along Alma Ville Road. The first phase of construction is to build a 5,000-square-foot winery on the property with the existing grape vineyard, it's already there. One of the conditions of approval, and we've done our comments on this, we sent to the design engineer, he's pretty much addressed the comments that we had, there are a couple outstanding items. One of them is fairly minor, one of the notes on the plat, I believe it's note 10, one of our comments was that they changed the zoning. The zoning was listed originally on the site plan as being R-15, however, this was rezoned. He actually made the change in the left-hand, lower-left-hand corner of the site plan where he shows the setback diagram and the setback chart, but there's a note on a couple of the pages that says, "Per the Rutherford County Planning Commission, this property and all surrounding properties are zoned R-15," so that would need to be amended. The other issue had to do with one of the conditions that was approved along with the conditional use permit, and that had to do with the building itself. The building itself has to meet the Smyrna, Town of Smyrna design standards. At this point, the applicant does have an architect that he's working with, however, we haven't seen any architectural renderings of the project, but before any permits would be issued, we just had to make sure that that met the Town of Smyrna's guidelines. One other item also that just occurred to me as well, another one of the conditions had to do with right-of-way dedication. There is a note on the plat that acknowledges the fact that the dedication will have to take place prior to the certi-, or I believe it's certificate of occupancy, yes, prior to certificate of occupancy being issued. So I think that with those staff comments, if this is approved, subject to those, I think staff is comfortable with that, we'll just make sure that those items are addressed, you know, prior to any, that project being completed.
Is that standard to be before certificate of occupancy, or should that be before issuance of a building permit?
The right-of-way, or the?
Yeah, the right-of-way.
The right-of-way, we have typically done before certificate of occupancy, because they can go ahead and get started, because really, the work they're doing so far back on the property, if they want to wait toward the end of the project to dedicate the right-of-way, that's fine with us.
As long as something doesn't happen and-
Right.
-that not become a lending agency or something, not release something or something, and have a trouble.
Sure. Now, I mean, there's nothing, right, there's nothing wrong with putting it before a building permit if you'd rather do that, I mean-
If that's your standard way of doing it, I just hate to see a glitch in the system at that point in time, somebody with a finished building, they can't get their C of O or something, but if that's the way you all historically have done it, then I feel sure it's fine.
But, of course, before building permit, he'll have to make sure that he meets the Town of Smyrna's design guidelines for that building, so. But, other than that, I don't think there was any drainage concerns that weren't already addressed from engineering standpoint, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions?
Doug, should we wait before we approve this, and then let the Town of Smyrna go ahead and give their comments?
Well, I don't, I mean, if you would like to do that, you certainly can. From staff standpoint, I think we're comfortable with it. We'll be, he'll be allowed to do a certain amount of groundwork, you know, grading of the site and everything anyway, before he even gets into the building of the proposed structure. I mean, those are kind of, those are things he wouldn't have to worry about from the Town of Smyrna standpoint, but before he actually gets a building permit for the actual building itself, he would have to make sure that he meets their standards. So we won't issue him a building permit till he does, but I mean, if you'd rather wait until we have that, I mean, we can just defer this and take it up at the next meeting.
I'm not saying I'd rather wait, but it seems like we're almost putting cart before the horse, because they need their approval before they can do anything.
Staff, from our standpoint, we're comfortable doing it that, doing it this way. I mean, if you would rather, like I said, I mean, I know it's not, maybe not an issue if you'd rather do it one way or the other, but we're fine with it that way, too.
Do you know when it's going before the Town of Smyrna?
Well, I don't necessarily think this has to go before their planning commission. I think it's just a matter of staff review, that they'll just look at it and say, "Yes, it meets our standards," or "No, you have to do A, B, C, and D to meet our standards," and we'll coordinate with them before any building permits issued here. So it's not, it's not a situation like when a site plan has to go in front of the city of Murfreesboro because it's got city sewer or something like that. This is a little bit different, this is really going to be just a staff review on their end.
Steve, do you want to comment, if you have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Steve Steele with Huddleston Steel. No, I think primarily, when I heard Mr. Phillips talking about Smyrna approving it, I was just going to ask, I think the idea, the process is, the staff here will make a determination whether or not the plans meet the Town of Smyrna's design review guidelines. I don't think it's a matter of submitting it to the Town of Smyrna. Now, out of courtesy, they might review it for you, but I don't know that there's a true submittal process. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, any other questions? Have a motion?
I do have a question. Okay, so now I'm confused. I thought I knew what was going to happen to the plan, and then based on what Steve said, it sounds like he thinks you're going to review it compared to the Town of Smyrna's guidelines, and we think the Town of Smyrna's going to review it.
Well, we'll make, whatever copies we get here, we'll send over to Town of Smyrna. I mean, they're in a better position to review their guidelines than we are, so we'll coordinate with them, but it'll, from how we normally handle something like this, it's a situation where we give them the plans, I mean, it doesn't come up very often, but-
But so we're going to make sure the plan gets there?
Yeah, we'll make sure-
We're not going to rely on the applicant to get it there?
No, no.
We're going to make sure-
We'll make sure they get it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm good.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Well, do you want a staff comments or Smyrna comments?
Well, part of his staff comments included that they meet the Smyrna guidelines.
Have a second. Have a motion, a second. All opposed to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. All right. Staff reports. Anything there before we go to election?
Yeah, well, I guess we'll do that last, just a couple of items before the chairman and vice chair for this year. The first thing would be, of course, it's our budget time, when we're working on the fiscal year 2012, 2013 budget, and our bylaws call for us to establish a budget committee of five planning commission members to review the budget along with staff, and then make a recommendation to the full planning commission for their consideration. This year, I believe I gave you the names, but you want me to go ahead and read them off?
This year's budget committee would be Mike Kush, Will Jordan, Veronica Buchanan, Rhonda Allen, Pettis Reed, so on the budget committee, and you'll get together as you lay the time that's suitable for everyone.
Right, and just for everyone who may be listening in on this, we, I've talked with each of them, or at least corresponded with each of them, prior to making the recommendation that they be on the committee. I think most of them have done it in the past, so this isn't really anything that should be new for them. But typically what we do with this, we'll have just one meeting, you know, after staff puts the budget together, you know, myself and Mr. Corbett work pretty closely together putting our budgets together, and then we'll have typically over a lunch meeting or something like that, we'll advertise it, as we advertise all of our public meetings, and it's just a quick, you know, we'll have a quick lunch, typically bring your own kind of thing, and then we'll present the budget numbers, kind of review from last year's budget, and if there's questions or anything. I don't anticipate there being a lot of changes to this year's budget, probably be similar to a lot of the budgets we've seen in past years. We, at this point, we're not anticipating any major increases in spending, or any new purchases of new equipment, or anything like that, so it looks pretty straightforward. But typically, it's just a one meeting, it's not a whole lot of time commitment to it, and then they'll make their, at our February day meeting, which I'm not sure what day is off the top of my head, but, well, they'll make their recommendation to the full planning commission.
Okay. Do you want any comments on the year and report and work schedule?
Yes, part of the, what we try to do every year is we put together a, kind of a, a report of accomplishments from the previous year, and some upcoming projects and things we'd like to undertake for the, for the next, this year, I guess, the current year. So you have a copy of that before you on your tables today. Just an idea, just a quick overview of some of the completed projects we had, of course, probably the, I guess, the most significant is the adoption of the county's first comprehensive plan in April of 2011, April 25th. Not, while not, at this point, not a legally binding document, it does act as a guide for future growth and development, and we do use it on a daily basis when we're considering zoning changes and things like that. Based on some of the comments we had from our last report, we also created some regulations for temporary occupancy of recreational vehicles. You'll recall that our regulations prior to those changes didn't allow RVs to be used as living quarters, which we think is appropriate, however, there are times we realize when things happen that it may not be a, necessarily a bad thing, in order to have an RV be used as a temporary living quarters for a natural disaster, someone's constructing a home, wants to live on a property, something to that effect. So we brought some amendments to you back in April, March, April of last year, and those were put into the zoning ordinance. Also, those changes have been brought forward to the proposed draft, which we'll be having a work session on in just a little bit. You'll also notice, and I think we've discussed this, we've revised our staff comments format for the rezonings. You'll notice that, I think we've done a lot better job of presenting a lot more information in an easier-to-read format, so I just want to point that out. Also, some ongoing projects, you're probably aware that the Public Safety Committee appointed a subcommittee for bicycle pedestrian safety. That committee still meets pretty much monthly, not always, there are some times where we take a month off, but things are moving forward on that. Really, at this point, what we're looking at is possible events for National Bicycle Month, which are, which is in May this year, so nothing that, at this point, the planning commission really needs to get involved in, but that's just something that staff has been kept busy with. We also came up with some storm shelter regulations, which seems pretty appropriate considering the storms we had last night coming into today. Not, storm shelters are something that the zoning was pretty much silent on, and we wanted to make sure that whenever we started getting more and more requests for these, which we have been, both planning and code staff, that there was a uniform set of guidelines to go by for applicants to be treated equally throughout the process. So while we wanted to encourage those kind of structures to be built, we didn't want them to be so onerous that, kind of discouraged people from that. So after researching several different ordinances around this area, as well as maybe, let's say, in the Midwest, Oklahoma, Nebraska, those areas, we came up with, I thought, some pretty reasonable standards for that, that were approved by the Board of Commissioners back in September of this year, or last year, excuse me. And as part of something we're doing just in staff, in the office, we're currently, we are working on the process of implementing a digital zoning compliance form. Right now, before a building permit, someone has to come up to our office and make sure that everything meets setbacks, that's proper for the zoning, it wants to be in those kind of things. Right now, those are really just on paper forms, but what we're proposing is to have a digital system, a database, to help assist with that. We'll still be able to print those out, which makes them a lot easier to read, but also will help us to track development, it'll help us to see what kind of activity we've been seeing, and it just, it'll be easier for archiving information as well, so that's something we hope to, we've got the system created, now it's just a matter of implementing it, so we're working on that right now. As far as the work schedule for this year, of course, we'll continue to work on our zoning drafts, the map and the ordinance, as well as the subdivision regulations. The city of Murfreesboro has currently begun the process of developing a greenway, blueway, and bikeway master plan through their Parks and Recreation Department. Most of the areas examined would be within the city limits, but we do expect that there will probably be some routes they'll look at in the county, so the city has asked for a representative of the county to be on their committee as well. Now, they've only had a startup meeting at this point, so we don't have a whole lot of information about what exactly they're planning on doing, but they have approached us and asked us, asked us to be a part of that, and, of course, we're more than happy to do that. So that'll be something, we're not sure how much time that'll take really from staff, from a staff standpoint, but that is something that we are focusing on. One other thing is the, we're working on a standard operating procedure, almost like a manual, if you will, for our office, with the adoption of the plan, the eventual approval of the zoning and subdivision regulations, it's really given us a chance to kind of step back and look at what existing processes are there, and how they may or may not change during the creation of the new zoning and the subregs. So this will give us a chance to kind of put everything on paper about how things work, and be able to have standard procedures in the office for handling these things, and they're already in existence, but just a matter of actually putting them in writing, so I think that'll be helpful as well. You'll notice that in previous years, we've had longer lists, but at this point, because we're still working on the zoning ordinance, and we'll be working on subdivision regulation, that does take a lot of staff time, and quite frankly, some of the other things that we'd like to do, we won't be able to until those items are done, so that's kind of why the list is short. Something we would like to eventually do is look at some of those rural nodes that were recommended by the comprehensive plan, and look at those a little more closely. Now, that's something we've discussed here, but at this point, we're not really comfortable doing that until these other items are taken care of. So that's just kind of a quick, a quick overview of the work schedule from last year, and also the upcoming, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions?
Of course, after looking at this, if you have questions, feel free to give us a call, we'd be more than happy to discuss anything with you, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I guess the last thing we have under staff reports is the election of chairman and vice chairman for this year.
All right. Mr. Last paragraph, excuse me.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, the last paragraph says, "Do you want us to authorize the work?"
Oh, yes.
You need a motion.
I mean, it's, yes, and it's just basically saying that you've looked it over, you don't have any problem with what we're talking about. Of course, if things come up during the year, and this needs to be amended, that can always happen. This isn't really necessarily a binding vote or anything, it's just more of, yes, we approve of what you're doing, and have no issue with what you're proposing, so.
Move to authorize the work schedule. Okay, have a motion, a second. All opposed to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pettis Reed, report on the election of chairman and vice chairman. Please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the nominating committee has met, consisting of Veronica Buchanan, Vincent Windrow, and myself. We have discussed the selection of chairman and vice chairman, and we've talked this over with both individuals, who have agreed to accept these positions if nominated and elected, and we wish to place the names in nomination of Jeff Phillips as chairman, and Craig Lynch as vice chairman.
Very good. Very good.
I guess I handled this part of this, yeah. Okay, we have the report from the committee. Are there any other nominations for the chair or vice chair? Okay, if not, we need a motion to close the nominations.
Make a motion, we accept these by acclamation, or whatever word is.
Second.
Second.
All right, I guess the, let me just make sure I got this clear, the nominate, or the motion was to close the nominations and accept the committee's recommendations as the nomination is Mr. Phillips as chairman, and Mr. Lynch as vice chairman.
Hurry up before he changes his mind.
Pretty much immediately. All right, with that, I will, we have the motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Congratulations. One more motion. I'll take one more motion, Lord.
Motion to persecute.
I sat right over there, Jim. Thank you, Jeff.
About 10 minutes, we'll get together about 10 minutes to start the work session. We advertise that at 9:30, so we've got about nine, 10 minutes to go, so.
Any time to read some of this.
I call the work session of the Regional Planning Commission to order. I think at our December meeting, our last December meeting, we were, we asked for questions and concerns, and I think we've received those, and staff has developed some comments, so I'll turn this work session over to Doug and-
Just pass on a couple of them.
Allow him to do this process.
Thank you, Chairman Phillips, I appreciate the comments. Sorry, I can't myself settle here. Okay, as you recall, December 12th of last year, we had a public hearing, our first public hearing, on the proposed zoning ordinance, received a number of comments at that meeting. Also, at that meeting, the planning commission asked that we maybe develop some sort of a web-based tool, or something like that, on our website, in order for people to come and look at the ordinance online, and to leave any comments that they may have on that form. So we did that, that was up and running about December 20th or 21st, I believe, right before the holidays, and we have received a number of comments on it, it kind of ebbs and flows. We got a few comments at the very beginning when it first opened, then it was kind of, kind of quiet for a little bit, then over one weekend, a couple of weeks ago, we received quite a few comments, and this, I believe, I guess it was this past, past week, we received several as well. And what we have tried to do is, we have tried to respond to the comments that we heard at the public hearing, as well as those comments we've received on the web-based form, as well as if people were to call in. Of course, that, those weren't the only ways that people could contact us, as we stated, they could call us, they could come into our office and talk with us, send us an email straight from our regular email address, as opposed to going through the web-based form, they could do smoke signals in the sky, however they wanted to get comments to us, we were more than happy to take those comments. So what we have here before you is the comments that we have received, as well as our responses to those comments. Now, we have received a couple after this had gone out, but they were fairly, we can discuss them as we, as we go along. One of them, I believe, had to do with those RV standards that we had talked about, and I believe there was another flood comment, but again, we'll get to those as we, as we go on. But at this point, I guess I just need a little bit of guidance from you as the commission, as far as how you want us to go through this, if you just want us to go through comment by comment, if you want us to kind of give an overview of the chapter, and then kind of the comments we received, how you would like us to do that. We're kind of open to however you would like to do this, so.
What's your wishes?
I would prefer.
Comment, comment.
Okay. And this is an informal gathering, of course, as far as the meeting is concerned, I mean, it's not a public hearing, obviously, but it is a public meeting, and there are several people here that I know are interested in the process, so if you have questions as a commission to staff during this, I mean, obviously, just ask, and we can kind of elaborate on the questions that we had received and the responses that we, that we gave. So from that standpoint, I guess, if there's no other questions or anything, I guess we'll go ahead and get started.
I know there were some questions about people not being able to attend this meeting, it being during the day. We've got 27 pages of, between comments and replies and all here. I would hope we would find time to do this same thing again at the next meeting, whether it be 10 minutes worth or two hours' worth, and allow people that are at work at this point in time, the ability to come back, at least.
Yeah, and that's fine, and-
We've got a lot of material to go over today, I don't think we want to be here at 4 o'clock this afternoon still doing this, so we might, you know, depending on how this goes, but at least I hope we'll stay open to having some ability, some more work session at the next night meeting.
Right, and I'll, I'll just throw this out there, of course, the intention of this meeting was not to make any kind of a decision today. I mean, we were always going to discuss this today, as well as having another public hearing, which planning commissions already said they wanted to have, before any decision is submitted to, or any recommendations made to the Board of Commissioners. Now, the reason, of course, we did not have a meeting, our night meeting this month, and I know there were some, some comments about that, I'll just go ahead and address that. Typically, as you know, that's the meeting where we handle our rezoning cases, and we had none. When the comment form went up, and by the time the meeting time for the first meeting of the month came along, we only had about six comments on the web-based form. Of course, with the holidays and everything that had come up, and the fact that it took about a week, I guess, to get the form up and running on our website, I mean, that just wasn't enough time, we felt, in order to public, or adequately get public comment into this process, even now, I know there's probably comments out there that we haven't received yet. So the decision was made at that time, you know, even concerning that we didn't have any other business, it would probably be a good idea to just not have that meeting, because we'd be discussing, there'd be nothing to discuss, you know, really, we'd discuss a few comments, and then we would move on. But we felt there was, more time was needed, especially with the holidays, and the fact that as staff, you know, we had plans over the holidays as well, there were several of us that weren't around, so we wanted to give adequate time to any responses that we did get. Also, our work sessions are typically held during the day meeting, that's just our normal practice, as you all are well aware of. So I know there may have been a perception out there that we had canceled that meeting because we were trying to not get public comment, but that is not the case at all. So I just wanted to make that clear.
That wasn't why I was implying, at all, you know, I just wanted, you know, hopefully we could break this up. And do we know at this point if we have rezonings?
We have no rezonings, we have no rezonings for February.
But we could at least look into the, I would support having a meeting regardless.
And if that's what you want to do, that's fine with us.
The rest of the committee would be, would be in agreement with that, but at least that would, I wouldn't want to replay the same situation, put us right back to a day meeting, but hopefully we would have the meeting regardless, and then, and then we could, you know, if nothing else, work on this.
Sure, and that's, and we'll kind of nail all that down before we adjourn the work session today, as far as, as future steps go, but we'll do that, so. Okay, any other questions or comments, or anything, before we go ahead and jump in? And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we have our consultant, Mr. Bill Terry, here with us today as well. If there's any questions, either staff or Mr. Terry, I'm sure we'll be more than able to handle those. So we'll just go in and start with Chapter 1. Chapter 1 is the purpose and applicability of the regulations. As a general staff response, before we get into a lot of the responses that we received, several of the responses that we received really dealt with items that were in the purpose statements themselves, and just as a general statement, the purpose statements that you see at the beginning of several of these chapters in here are really, are just, as we stated here in our response, are statements of general applicability of the document, they're not specific regulations. The specific regulations are generally found in different sections, or even within the same section, that the purpose statement is found. So purpose statements in and of themselves should not be viewed as regulations, you know, the regulations typically follow those. You'll see that several of the comments, again, we received deal with that. So that was just a general comment that we wanted to bring to your attention. But the first regulation, and something else we did when we compiled these, we didn't put names to them, but I'm sure if people are here who made the comments, they'll recognize them as, as they go by. But the first regulation was 102B, which is on page 1-1, and the regulation is to implement the county's land use and major road plan, and the comment we received was, "The problem that any rezoning request is likely to be granted only if consistent with the comprehensive plan." Of course, our response to this is, "One of the purposes of the ordinance is to implement," as it says, "the county's land use and major road plan." Now, the comprehensive plan in and of itself, being it's only adopted at this point by the planning commission, does not require a legal consistency between those things. Staff, we are of the opinion that it's just good planning for the zoning ordinance to be consistent with the region's land use plan. Since this plan was adopted by the planning commission in April of this year, we feel it's appropriate for both the planning commission and the Board of Commissioners to use this plan as a guide for making land use decisions. And as with any ordinance, any plan can be amended over time if growth patterns differ from what the plan originally adopted, recommended at that time. And we've looked through, I mean, just several items of just planning literature, if you will, and one of the more recent ones we found, there was a quote there that we added here for our response, it says, "A plan, it says, 'Through required information gathering and analysis improves the factual basis for land use decisions. Using the physical plan as a tool to inform and guide these decisions establishes a baseline for public policies. The plan thus provides a measure of consistency to governmental actions, limiting the potential for arbitrariness.'" And that is something, you know, we hear from time to time, is a decision arbitrary, illegal, capricious, those terms being thrown out there. You know, if you have a plan that is consistent with your land use regulations, as far as zoning and everything goes, you know, we feel as staff that it puts you in a better legal footing than if they don't. So that's our response to that. Regulation 102D, which is again, it's the same on page 1-1, "To protect the character and maintain the stability of residential businesses, commercial manufacturing areas within the county, and to promote the orderly and beneficial development of such areas." And this kind of gets back to what we were talking about- And this kind of gets back to what we were talking about at the very beginning with our general staff response. You know, what does it mean by "character" being the comment? You know, I've already given you what I see as character regarding structures, but I do not see any reference to "character." Again, this is a general statement, not a regulation. Generally speaking, the statement refers to protecting residential, non-residential areas by encouraging development appropriate for each. And again, those regulations are found throughout the document, in the commercial sections, the residential sections, so forth and so on. 102E, same page, "to provide adequate light, air, privacy, and convenience of access to the property." The comment we received was, "Convenience of access to property by whom?" Again, this is a general statement, but the intent of the regulations is that no property be created without some kind of a public access, either by a private drive or public street. And of course, the big reason for that is property owners need a way to access their property. You know, I don't think, it's difficult to say what the person who made this comment had in mind when they asked this, but I almost got the impression that maybe they were thinking that somehow we're granting ourselves the ability to go on a people's property with access. I could be way off base on that, but if that is the intent, of course, all this is saying is we don't want to see property that's developed out in the county that has no access. You know, they have to have a legal access of some sort. So, and again, it really, just by the property owner, if nothing else. So, that's our response to that. Moving on to 102F, again, "regulating the intensity of open space surrounding buildings that is necessary to provide adequate light, air, and protect the public health." The comment we received was, "Was meant by regulating intensity of open space?" Again, this is more of a general statement, but we do feel that if you took the words "the intensity of" out of this section, you could delete it without affecting its meaning. So, we'll just say, "To regulate open spaces surrounding buildings, it's necessary to provide adequate light, air, and protect the public health." And I believe we've made that as a recommendation at the end, yes, we have. So, and we'll go over the regulations at the end, of what the proposed changes we have that we recommend for that, but we feel we could delete that, and it'd be fine.
Yeah, I think it's.
Moving on to 102G, "to fix reasonable standards to which buildings and structures shall conform." Define reasonable. Again, it's a general statement, not a regulation, but the regulations that building and structures must conform to, which can deal with setbacks, building height, those kind of thing, those are all detailed in different parts of the ordinance, depending on what kind of building is you're referring to. Let's see, and we received a, okay, I'm sorry. Moving on to 102H, which is actually on the next page, if you have your zoning document with you, 102H, "to prohibit uses, buildings, or structures which are incompatible with the character of development, or the permitted uses within specified, excuse me, zoning districts." The word "character" shows up again, being the comment, "incompatible with the character." And also, another, we received a couple on this, and the second comment was, "How is character of development defined and by whom?" Basically, what we did here is say, refer to the response we gave back at 102D, because it's pretty much the same comment, really. You know, as far as, generally speaking, again, these are just purpose statements, not regulations, but we're trying to encourage developments appropriate in both in residential areas and non-residential. So, the comments in and of themselves, they're fairly similar, so we just asked that they look back to that.
Doug, some of these questions, comments, these questions, are they all different than the current, what's in place right now? Are they all different, or are they, well, some of them are the same, or?
If you look at our, we have purpose statements in our existing regulation. Now, there, I would say there's probably a few more in this one, but if you look at our current purpose statements in Chapter 1, and it'll say, "Dividing the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County into districts according to the use of land, buildings, controlling regulating growth of Rutherford County, concentrating development areas where adequate sewage, facilities, soils, roads can be provided, regulating restricting the location of use of building structure, land for trade, industry, so forth and so on, lessening the danger of congestion of traffic on the roads and highways, limiting excessive numbers of intersection, driveways, highways, on and on, securing safety from fire, panic, flood, and other dangers, providing adequate privacy, light, and air, protecting the tax base by facilitating cost development, effective development of Rutherford County." So, you can see they kind of, the same general type language.
Heard excessive, adequate, and effective. Define those three. You know, that's kind of what we're doing right there.
Right, I mean, that's, and again, that's, these kind of statements that you see, these aren't unusual in zoning ordinances. I mean, you see these in a lot of ordinances. And typically, a lot of the, you know, the courts like to see why, if your ordinance is ever challenged for any reason, they want to know the purposes of why you've done what you've done. And you kind of lay out just a list of the reasons why you'd like to have your ordinance, and then throughout the regulations, you get into more detail. You know, no one's going to come into our office, and we're not going to look at a development and say, "Well, we don't think that that's appropriate in this area just because of this particular item here in the purpose statements." We're going to look to see if it meets the regulations of that district. You know, again, these are just general purpose statements, is really all this is, in Chapter 1, so.
So, Doug, the aim of the purpose statements, again?
Is just to give a general overview as to why you're doing what you're doing, essentially, and Bill, I don't know if you want to chime in on that.
Yeah, the major reason you have that, and it comes out of case law. When a ordinance gets challenged, the court is going to look at the detail of the regulation, then we'll know why you're doing it. And so, the purpose statements give a framework for the regulations that follow. And the regulations are actually, of course, what determine the character or the intensity.
Any other comments before we go on? Okay, let's see, okay, we're on the top of page 2 now. The comment we, well, I'm sorry, the regulation, it's the same regulation, 102H, again, which is on page 1-2. This is a comment to that regulation as well, or, I'm sorry, that purpose statement as well. Who decides what is incompatible? Does this not leave a door open to abuse by anyone on planning? And our response was, "Incompatible uses are determined using the regulations throughout the zoning ordinance, such as Appendix B, which lists which land uses are permitted in which districts." Again, we're just not going to, someone's not going to come up here and say, "I want to build this house in this residential district." We're going to say, "Well, I don't think that's compatible with this area." I mean, if they bring it in and say, "We want to build a house here, we're going to look at it, does it meet the setbacks, height, you know, block coverage, all these things? If it does, they can do it." I mean, that's just the purpose of what zoning is for. 102I, "to prevent such additions to and alterations or remodeling of existing buildings or structures that would not comply with the restrictions and limitations imposed hereunder." The comment being, "Is there no grandfathering?" Our response to that is, yes, there is. Grandfathered uses and/or structures, which are otherwise known as nonconformities, are discussed at length in Chapter 13 of this document. And they're also given protection through state law, TCA 13-7-208, which really acted as the foundation for Chapter 13 that we have in the proposed zoning draft. So, I guess the quick answer to that question is, there is grandfathering. I mean, that's something that's required by state law, so, and again, our regulations are based off of that. 102K, "to provide protection against fire, explosion, noxious fumes, and other hazards in the interest of the public health, safety, comfort, and general welfare." The comment we received was, "How does zoning protect against fire and fumes?" Says, "The language in this is far too broad when talking about comfort, health, and safety, and particularly general welfare, which is wide open to anyone's definition." Again, this is not meant as a regulation, but some of the items that this does refer to, does refer to our regulations in Chapter 11, our performance standards, where we talk, there are several items that we're looking to, we're proposing to regulate as far as noise, light, and those kind of things, fire, I think, being one of them, you know, hazardous materials, those kind of things. So, again, not necessarily a regulation in and of itself, but you can see how that ties into why we have those regulations in Chapter 11, why we're proposing those regulations, and for the performance standards. "To prevent the overcrowding of land," I'm sorry, 102L, yes, "to prevent the overcrowding of land and undue concentration of structures so far as possible and appropriate in each district by regulating the use and the bulk of buildings in relation to the land surrounding them, excuse me." The comment, "Where does the county government get the authority to define what is overcrowding of land when referring to personal residential property? As the law currently is written, or not written, we have the perfect constitutional right to do with our property what we can and want to. Why would we agree to do, to give this up?" Our response to this, overcrowding of land is avoided using our regulations that we will have included in here, such as floor area ratio, which you typically see for non-residential uses, lot coverage, setbacks, those kind of things. Now, these regulations are currently enforced in our zoning resolution, our current resolution, with the exception of the floor area ratio, we really don't look at that too much, in our, again, in our current zoning code. So, there are limits as to what can be done on a person's property, even currently. And we put another small response there at the bottom of that, you'll see, it says, "Balancing a person's right to use their property with the rights of the surrounding property owners is always a challenge with any zoning ordinance." I mean, that's something, it's always a balancing act. You know, of course, you want to provide rights for the property owners, but, you know, the property owners around them have rights as well. So, that's kind of the battle we fight a lot of the times. So, you know, I don't necessarily agree with the comment that they have the perfect constitutional right to do with their property what they want, and what they can, and what they want to, there are limits even today. So, that's just reflecting that reality, really. Regulation 102M, "to conserve the value of land and the buildings thereon throughout the county." It says, "The references conserve, this reference conserves the value of land, the map and the comprehensive plan would lessen the value of many properties." We felt this really was more of a personal opinion, there was no evidence submitted that would support this. You know, I'd, reasonable minds, I guess, can differ on that, however, if you have a plan and a zoning ordinance that are harmonious and encourage responsible development, you know, I don't see that necessarily negatively affecting someone's property values. Let's see. Regulation 102N, "to provide for the gradual elimination of those uses of land, buildings, and structures which do not conform to the standards of this ordinance, and which adversely affect the development and taxable value of property in each district." The comment is, "This provides that as the ordinance and map create nonconforming uses, then they will be eliminated." Later, there is a section on nonconforming that conflict with this statement, and then a second comment, again, "No grandfathering." Our current regulations in response to that contain a similar statement, as do many other zoning ordinances across in the country, even in our area. Murfreesboro's zoning ordinance has a similar comment to this. Nonconforming uses by their nature, they're noncompliant with the existing zoning regulations. Many such uses exist in the unincorporated county and will continue to exist if this, and when this is ever adopted. I mean, that's just the reality. Now, it says, "While the eventual goal of this ordinance and the other ordinance like it is a gradual elimination of nonconforming uses, these uses do enjoy protection," as we stated earlier, "through Chapter 13 of this document that we're looking at right now, as well as state law, TCA 13-7-208. They can continue, they can expand, they can prosper. There's nothing that says that they can't do that provided they fall within those regulations." The county was not going to actively engage in elimination of nonconforming uses. If they're legally established, they're allowed to continue. That's just the reality of it. So, again, provided they stay in compliance with the regulations of Chapter 13, which are based on the state law, and I feel are very consistent with the state law. Moving on to Section 104, which is the scope of the regulations. It says, "Section 104 gives sweeping authority to the planning department that does not currently exist. This will obviously add to the workload of this department, probably requiring additional hiring. This will become not only burdensome to the department, but will create delays in any change to personal residential property. It will also create very divisive, negative feelings between residents in this department." Our response to that is, there's nothing in this section that's going to change the way our office currently enforces the zoning code. Quite frankly, even if I wanted more people, which I think we're fairly well-staffed right now, I doubt the county commission and Mayor Burgess would let me have anybody else. So, that's going to be mostly a budgeting-type issue. At this point, there's nothing in here that we see that's going to create any kind of an increased workload on our department, things that we're not already doing. So, you know, I don't feel that that's, while I understand our concern, I don't think it's a, something that we need to worry about from a staff standpoint. It just reflects, again, the reality of zoning law as well, that development will have to adhere to the regulations that are currently in effect at the time a permit is applied for. Again, we're not proposing anything different. No matter what changes are made, if a new code is adopted, whatever new development comes in is going to have to meet whatever the regulations are in effect at that time. So, again, we're not creating anything, we're not trying to create a new government bureaucracy, if you will, you know, the processes are already in existence. They may change as far as how they're implemented. You know, when we get to the zoning process a little bit later, you know, we'll talk about the, you know, the conditional use permit versus the zoning by right, those kind of things. I mean, yes, there will be changes in those regards, but again, those are things that we're currently, we already do to an extent, so we're not going to be adding more personnel or anything like that. Moving on to 104B-2, it says, "Whenever an existing building is expanded or remodeled by more than 50% its square footage within a 24-month period, the entire site shall be brought into compliance with the site improvements required by this ordinance." One comment we received was, "This may prohibit the growth of a small business, it needs to be reconsidered." Our response to that is, of course, we're not trying to prohibit, or trying to discourage the growth of small business by these regulations, not at all. It says, "The reason that we came up with this regulation is to prevent existing land and business owners from what we would call piecemealing site development, doing it just a little bit at a time, with the intent of getting around the regulations, which may require them to do more than they want to do, quite frankly." I mean, we've seen that in subdivisions, even since I've been here, where someone will have a subdivision that they want to eventually break it out into several lots, we'll just say 10 lots as an example, and they may come in with two or three two-lot subdivisions over time to get around the preliminary plat requirement. That way, they don't have to show drainage and all those things. That's really what we're trying to avoid, is someone doing something to that effect. You know, we're not trying to say, "Small business, you can't expand because we're going to make you do this." You know, that's not the intent here, it's just to stop someone from deliberately trying to get around the regulations. That's really the intent of this particular regulation. There was another comment on this, in number 2, says, "Spells out punitive measures against property owners. This is not currently within the purview of this department and is an overreaching of authority, bringing up the question of constitutional interference in one's ability to pursue happiness." In regards to that, in this particular section, there are no punitive measures discussed. I mean, the regulation reads, and I'll read the whole thing, it says, "Whenever an existing building is expanded or remodeled by more than 50% of its square footage within a 24-month period, the entire site shall be brought into compliance with the site improvements required by this ordinance." There's no discussion there of punitive measures. Zoning enforcement is discussed in Chapter 14 of our zoning ordinance, and is a function of our zoning enforcement officials. And Mr. David Jones, as the building codes director, that actually falls under his department, it currently does. There'll be some more comments on this a little later that I'll get into more detail there. This regulation does not prohibit expansion or remodeling of a building, it is only meant to protect against, against someone skirting around the regulations by piecemealing development. That was the intent of this regulation, not trying to tell anyone they can't expand their business, they can expand what, you know, anything like that, that's, this is really the intent of this regulation, is how I explained it earlier.
Okay. Let's go beyond the site. I mean, anytime you remodel a certain percentage, you have to fall under the Southern Building Code for electric, heat and air.
Well, international building code, but yes, yeah.
I mean, it's really no different than what we're saying right there.
Right, I mean, whatever code happens to be in effect at that time, again, it just, what we're trying to do here is prevent someone from deliberately, you know, okay, they see the regulation, "Oh, I can't expand my property more than 50% of its square footage, so I have a 5,000-square-foot building, so I'm going to build 2,499 square foot, make my expansion, then I'm going to go on, then in six months, I'm going to come back and make the other 500 square foot that I wanted to do." That's the kind of situation we're trying to avoid. You know, just say, "Look, if that's your plan, just come in upfront with everything the way you want it, and go through the process as you're supposed to go through the process." That's really all we're saying at this point. Does everybody, does that make sense? Everybody understand that?
And this was provoked by previous attempts to skirt around?
Well, yeah, I don't necessarily know if provokes the right word. It's not something, I'm not going to sit here and say, "We see this all the time," because we don't. We have seen attempts at this in the past. Again, if you just press me for an example, the one I can remember off the top of my head was a subdivision that, where they were trying to do that, and that just provides a little protection for us, you know, a little, say, "Okay, we see what you're trying to do here. Look, just ask for what you want, and we'll move on using the process," is really what our intent was. Okay. Okay, I think we're on Regulation 106, which if you have your zoning, is page 1-3. It says, "When a previously approved conditional use permit remains active and contains specific conditions or time limits, those conditions and limitations shall remain in effect under the terms of this ordinance." It says, "A previously approved conditional use permit approving activity that was never established or was discontinued for more than 30 months shall become void." The comment we received was, "No grandfathering, one should not have to reply for a conditional use permit at all." Our response to this, the regulation as we have it written, is that any- Our response to this, the regulation as we have it written is that any previously approved and active conditional use permit will be allowed to continue under the conditions that it was approved under. And that just reflects the reality of our current zoning structure. We know that there's a lot of conditional use permits out there. Trying to handle those in a zoning, a new zoning ordinance can be difficult, and we felt the best way to handle that, these existing conditional use permits, was to say, "Okay, basically grandfathered. If you are active, you can continue on." Now, that being said, the planning commission and board of commissioners, over time, and even the board of zoning appeals, have approved a number of conditional use permits that were either never established, or were established maybe 10, 15 years ago, have since discontinued. Property transfer has probably taken place, the original owners probably don't even own the property anymore. Those are the ones that we're really looking at, saying, "Okay, your conditional use permit was approved, however, it was never activated." Quite frankly, they're probably never going to be activated. There is a current, there's currently in our zoning resolution, there's a statement in there that says, "Any conditional use permit that's over, essentially, it's over a year in age, but has never been activated either by building permit or business license or something to that effect." The planning director has the ability to void those permits. So what this statement is doing is essentially one blanket, if you had your conditional use permit, never activated it, or it's been inactive for, I believe what we said, more than 30 months, then you, it's gone. You just don't have it anymore. And that is how we just figured it'd be the best way to handle those situations where either there's no chance of the conditional use permit ever being activated, or it was activated at one point but discontinued, the property owner is long since gone, whoever owns the property now has absolutely no interest in it. And I think it also serves as a protection for a lot of these areas. If you, for the sake of argument, let's say you move into an area, somebody has a conditional use permit on property next to you that you didn't know about, and it's been approved for five, six years, but no one's ever activated it. You know, conditions in an area may change over time, and the planning commission, board of zoning appeals, whoever may feel differently about a zoning change or a conditional use permit in that area than they had five years ago. So all we're saying is, okay, if you had it but never used it, if you want it again, you're going to have to come back and ask for it again and go through the, the, the proper procedure for that. Because again, things change over time. You know, what was appropriate five, six years ago may not be appropriate today. So we feel that that acts as a protection for those areas out there where there may be some kind of conditional use permits that's kind of hanging around that are just out there but have never been activated, or have been active for years. So that was the, the reason for that. But at the same time, we want to recognize those that have been activated that are legally able to continue, which is why we have that statement worded the way we do. So people who are currently using their property in the manner of which they were approved, they're fine. They'll just come in under the, the new ordinance, under this clause, and then any non-conforming clauses. Because there are some conditional use permits out there that were approved that will be non-conforming, quite frankly, because we didn't feel it was appropriate to change the zoning of the property. So, that's kind of our explanation for that particular item. Okay. Okay, moving on to 107, which we're now on page 14, and we're getting toward the end of chapter one. It says, "Wherever in the course of administration and enforcement of this ordinance, it is necessary or desirable to make any administrative decisions, then unless other standards are provided in this ordinance, the decision shall be made so that the result will not be contrary to the spirit and purpose of this ordinance or injurious to the surrounding neighborhood." The comment is, "Who was, who will administer?" This is calling for the creation of a zoning enforcement department, again, adding more government. It also punishes people who are paying property taxes, who have the right to pursue happiness, and if there is a dispute with property issues, that should be taken to civil court rather than determined by our planning department. To our response to that is administration and enforcement, again, are discussed in chapter 14 of this ordinance. Now, when these comments were written, the person that wrote these may just not have made it to chapter 14 yet, so the, that may have answered their question, but I mean, I have no way of knowing that. But the zoning ordinance is currently administered by the planning and engineering department, and to an extent, even the planning commission. It's enforced by the building codes department through their existing zoning enforcement officers. Again, we're not adding any departments, we're not adding any officials. They're already there, they're already doing their job. Again, their scope of their job may change a little bit just because of what we're proposing in here, but as far as their function, that's not, it's still going to be the same. Again, this is currently how our zoning regulations are administered and enforced in the county, and no changes are to be made in that regard. So, again, we're not adding any government. You know, again, the processes are there, it's just a matter of probably redefining how they operate. The proposed changes that we had for chapter one, if you recall, a little earlier, we talked about the intensity of open space. We do recommend that under section 102F, we just take that statement out. You know, the, "Regulate open spaces surrounding buildings that are necessary to provide adequate light, air, and protect the public health." Just take the intensity out, because it doesn't necessarily lend anything to it anyway. So, even though it's just a public, it's a, excuse me, a purpose statement, we feel we can take that out and the intent will still remain the same. So, that's our recommended change on that. Do you have any questions or comments on anything else in chapter one that you want us to look more closely into? Yes, sir.
I have a question. Mine's really more of a legal definition that I'm, I'm after, because the more I see the word grandfathering come up in these first couple of pages, the more fuzzy I get on the true definition. And while Mr. Terry's here and Josh is here, perhaps if this is an appropriate time, could you elaborate a little bit about what the term grandfathering encompasses? And then maybe specifically talk about to what extent does the state law that governs that affect the homeowner or the landowner and the public side?
Go ahead. Um, look at a specific example. Let's say that you have a small business out in the county 25 years ago, and it grew up and prospered. But over time, the land use around it changes, and so the county decides to change zoning. That small business is protected. You cannot zone out the business. And even though everything around it may have changed, the state law you're referring to gives it legal protection, and it does bind the county. The term grandfather is not in the law, of course. That's a popular term everybody uses. The term is non-conforming use. It does not conform to one or more requirements of the existing zoning. So when a, a government changes zoning and it affects a business or an industry, in the way state law is, is worded, an apartment house, multifamily dwelling, not single-family dwellings, um, then that, those uses are protected on infinitum. They can, they can add to the use, they can tear it down and rebuild it.
Is it, is it just that particular owner?
It's not necessarily the owner, it's the land, and it's the land use.
Okay.
So the owner could sell the-
Land changes hands.
That doesn't matter. Goes with the land.
Okay. So if I, if I had a barbershop and 25 years later, I'm, I passed away, my family sold the property, as long as another barbershop came back, he's, can continue that business?
Yeah. What, what the law says is as long as the use does not change.
Okay. Well, let's, let me give, be a devil's advocate. Suppose it's no longer, the new owner doesn't want a barbershop, but he wants a pizza place.
That's different. That's the change of use.
Okay.
So that's not protected.
Okay. Although they still could be considered a commercial.
It's specific to the use that was originally established and protected.
All right. So it specifically has to follow the same 25-year history of that particular business?
So if, if, if a, the owner or a new owner proposes a change in that use, then that use has to comply with current zoning.
Okay.
And if current zoning allows that use, then it's okay. If it doesn't, it can't happen.
You mentioned it could be torn down and built back.
Yes, sir.
I've got some rental property, and I've got some duplexes out in the county that are on RS-15 property and actually supposed to be zoned multifamily or duplex, whatever. And I've been told in the past by people within the county, if one of them were to burn down, you know, beyond a certain percentage of destruction, I couldn't build it back. Have to build a house back on that spot because it wasn't zoned correctly. And you just said you could tear it down and build it back. Would that-
The, the determination would be whether or not a duplex is multifamily dwelling. The law was a-
Not zoned, zoned correctly for RS-15.
Mm-hmm.
So I was told it would not be grandfathered in if it was to burn down.
Generally speaking, residential uses are not protected by 13-7-208. So if, if you have a residence in a commercial zone that does not allow it-
So we're only talking about commercial at this point in time.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But the law was amended, I think, three years ago to cover multifamily dwellings as well. And this was in, after a circumstance happened where, I think it was a tornado, it tore down substantial, uh, a number of buildings in an apartment complex. It was non-conforming, it couldn't build it back. So those, uh, type associations came to the legislature to try to get that changed and included multifamily dwellings in that 13-7-208 protection. So it goes back to commercial, industrial, and multifamily, but it has never mentioned the word, "Single-family residential" or whatever. It's however you here define multifamily.
There's not a state definition for multifamily?
No.
You'd think a duplex would have two residents in it, that's multiple families.
Mm-hmm.
Throughout rural communities, and I can't think of one right now, but I'm, I'm sure there is, little small grocery stores that have grown over like blown fried green tomatoes. It hadn't been nothing but bushes and an old store there, but it is, was an old store. And it's not necessarily in a little node like we're talking about. Is it grandfathered?
Uh, depends on how long it's been out of business and how you determine what has gone out of business and discontinued use. There's provision, I think, in your existing zoning that says, when a use is discont, when a non-conforming use is discontinued for a period of time, then that use cannot be reestablished. The state law says that that period of time is 30 months. That a business can, can go out of business for 29 months and then, and reestablish. If it goes out of business for 31 months, it can't.
So it would not. Back to the 30 months, activity or inactivity. If something like, uh, years ago, we set up for drive-in, I don't remember if we conditional used permitted that, or-
I think it was.
Okay. That's, that's been passed 30 months. But say, uh, in two years, maybe 24 months in that time period, they came in and did a little dirt work, but they never did finish it, and it's been passed. Where's the 30 months? Does this start day one, or just where they scratched up a little dirt? Is that, is that considered activity?
That's going to be the issue. And there's no easy way to answer that, because it's going to be the responsibility of enforcement staff to determine whether or not a, a business has genuinely been discontinued. And there are certain indicators. Well, have you still got a business license? Have you scratched around on the dirt, son? Does that constitute reestablishment of the business? And that's an administrative decision that would have to be, had to be made, and then if there's disagreement with it, it would be appealed to the board of zoning appeals to make a decision. And if there's still disagreement, then it would have to go to court.
So it's sort of a gray area.
There's, yeah, I mean, as far as what this, what constitutes discontinuance of use is, is one of those problem areas.
So if you-
State law does not define it either.
If you let your business, well, let's go back to your barbershop, or 25 years ago. If, if that business owner has let his business license lapse, does that change the ballgame?
If the, well, there again, it's, this is a gray area. Has the business license lapsed? Is electricity still on? If it hasn't, how long has it been off?
Right.
And these kind of things. Determine how you make a decision on whether or not that business has been discontinued.
And Doug, I don't, I don't want to speak for you, but as you were going over that ordinance, sort of what I envisioned was that if there's any expression of interest in maintaining a previously approved conditional use permit, then staff is going to work with those people in letting it continue. What we're really trying to address are the ones that have gone completely dormant, and we're trying to bring closure to an old way of doing business so we can transition to our new way of doing business.
I, I think that's fair, what you just said.
Okay.
Any other comments on chapter one, at this time, anyway? All right. We'll go ahead and move on to chapter two. Chapter two deals with the use classification system and how it's set up. It's a fairly long, well, not too long, chapter, but a few pages, but we do have a few comments on it. The first comment, again, regulation, is chapter two. The comment was that, again, "I find this use classification system burdensome." Staff's response to this, again, this does appear to us at least to be more of a personal opinion. "Our current zoning regulations do not include any kind of a table of uses. Actually, we prefer the proposed method. We feel that it's easier to group specific uses by category as opposed to listing every possible use in the zoning document." With this system, we have an appendix in the back that lists different uses and how they're classified, and then you just go to the land use classification chart to determine where those uses are permitted. So I don't necessarily feel that this is any more burdensome than any other zoning system, cumbersome, excuse me, that I've ever experienced in my life. I know the one I, when I used to work with Murfreesboro City, they pretty much had the uses listed out, the, the chart in of itself, listed different residential uses, commercial, industrial, and was a number of pages, several pages long. So in this regard, I, I just don't feel that this is any more cumbersome than, than that. So, again, that's-
Sorry. May I add to that?
Yeah.
Um, you know the old saying, there's more than one way to scan a cat. There's more than one way to address this in a zoning ordinance, and this is one way. There are other ways. And we discussed these other ways early on in the process of, of deciding what to do, because this, this is a basis and framework for the entire ordinance. And you can have a listing of uses. They're kind of long, you got to find them. You're always going to miss one. Something's going to be left out. You can't cover everything. And so this system tries to provide a means and a mechanism for covering things that not really aren't listed, and it groups similar uses together that have similar characteristics, and that's the basis for it. And so that decision was made early on to have this type of system, so that's what we have.
What I like about this system the most is it gives the board of zoning appeals the ability, as, as Mr. Terry said, you're going to miss uses. Things are going to come up over time that maybe we hadn't considered when the ordinance was being developed. New types of businesses, new uses. I mean, 10 years ago, who would have thought of web-based design businesses and those kind of things? Where would those fall? This new ordinance gives the board of zoning appeal the ability to make the determination as to what category those new uses get placed in. It takes it out of staff's hands as far as saying, you know, "We could have an opinion, you know, so we feel it belongs in this particular sec, uh, category for the following reasons." But ultimately, the board makes their decision, and when they do, that can be added to the list, and we don't have that problem again. We know where that list, or where that particular use from then on is listed again. It kind of takes it out of staff's hands, which we, which we like. So that was the reason we went with the system that we're proposing here today. The next regulation, there's no more questions on that, is a regulation 201. It says, "Where there was a question," and this is just what we were talking about, "concerning the appropriate activity classification for any use not listed herein, the board of zoning appeals shall make the determination based upon the characteristics of the unlisted use." The comment was, "Will the board of zoning appeals be comprised of elected officials?" Our response to that is basically, no. Members of this board are appointed consistent with state law, which is TCA 13-7-106. State law requires that board of zoning appeal members are appointed. Now, they are appointed by the, I guess, the mayor and confirmed by the legislative body. So in that sense, it still is a legislative decision about who gets on those boards, but the boards in and of themselves are appointed. Regulation 206D, which is a few pages in, that would be 2-6. "Automotive repair and servicing includes establishments primarily engaged in furnishing auto repair services to the general public." The comment was, "Where can towers temporarily store autos that have been towed if currently doing so is only for 30 months?" Our response is, "Storage of towed and wrecked vehicles would fall under wrecker services, which is classified as a transport and warehousing activity, which is an industrial-type use, would be allowed in those type zones." And there's nothing in this section that discusses timeframes, so I'm not sure where the 30 months was coming from unless they were just getting confused with the non-conforming section. section. Uh, that's the only thing that I could determine off of that. Regulation two oh six L, which is on page two seven, uh, general personal services. It says, includes the provision to individuals of informational and instructional services as well as establishments primarily engaged in providing individual services generally related to personal needs. Says these activities do not include the storage or sale of goods or other property unless otherwise permitted herein. Uh, the comment received on this was, there's no mention of dry cleaning businesses, and again, this issue of storage is way too broad and begins to sound very, very petty and intrusive. And our response to this is, many use categories in this chapter list about three to five examples each, but they're not meant to be taken as an exhaustive list. Every section with such a list does state examples included but are not limited to. If you look under the land use index, which is Appendix C, dry cleaning businesses are classified as general personal services. So they are included within this particular classification. The storage and sale of goods is allowed as an accessory use within the commercial districts, which is in chapter six. So there is, uh, storage is something that is permitted. However, with that being said, we felt it might be appropriate to soften the language of that sentence, and we'll discuss that in a little while, about storage in order to clarify its intent. You know, we weren't trying to say that you couldn't store anything in your business. Uh, I mean, really, what I think what we're trying to do is just make the, um, understand, make the understanding that, um, let's just read that one more time. These activities, it says, these activities do not include the storage or sale of goods or other property unless otherwise permitted herein. Again, we're, you can see even within the language that's there, even though we're softening it up some, where it says property unless otherwise permitted herein, there are permissions in other places of the document that do allow for these types of storage. So we weren't trying to eliminate storage as a necessary part of some of these businesses, but we can see how that might be construed, so we do recommend that that be changed just a little bit. And again, at the end here, we'll kinda show you what we're proposing to do with that particular section. Under two oh six M, which is on the following pa- next page, I guess, two point, uh, two dash eight, general retail trade. It says, includes the retail sales or rental from the premises of goods primarily for personal or household use, but excluding goods and services listed in the other classifications. This activity type has two levels, establishments that are five thousand square feet of gross floor area or less, and establishments that are greater than five thousand square feet. It says, the comment was, by the planning department determining square footage, it is also driving costs, since landlords charge rent by the square foot, it is a total overreaching by this department to start dictating how much square footage is required for retail space. Our response for that is, the reason for the five thousand square foot is not trying to dictate how big the business has to be. What we're trying to do is put a break in there to allow smaller retail uses like corner markets, convenience stores, those kind of things. Those would be allowed closer to residential areas in what we call the north neighborhood commercial type area, commercial neighborhood, CN district. You know, those smaller uses would be more appropriate toward the residential areas. However, we also wanted to limit larger retail uses like a Walmart to a more commercially-oriented area. Now, that's not saying we're gonna see a lot of larger-scale development like that. Typically, those kind of uses require the sewer, which this county doesn't have, so most of the time, those uses locate within the city limits. But from time to time, we do see larger retail-type uses. All that five thousand square foot is trying to do is just saying if you're under five thousand square foot, you can be closer to residential areas. If you're over five thousand square foot, you really need to be further away in more commercial areas. That is the only reason for that regulation. We're not trying to say a retail store has to be this many square feet in order to operate. So that's just the clarification on that. Uh, two oh seven D, now we're getting into industrial activities on page two nine. Uh, transport and warehousing includes the provision of warehousing, storage, freight, handling, shipping, and trucking services. And the comment was, tow service with temporary storage must fit into this category. And our response is, as written, yes, a tow storage, tow, excuse me, a tow service with storage of any kind does fit into this category. And the biggest reason for that was to prevent the storage of wrecked vehicles on commercial property, some commercial property which could be closer to residential areas. Uh, we just felt it would be more appropriate in industrial areas. Now, again, this is something that if there's discussion on, or if, these, anything that we're talking about can be changed, of course. You know, the five thousand square foot break that we had between smaller retail-type uses and larger, that's something that we can, we can, that can be changed, this can be changed, but this, these are our responses to these comments. So just as a, kind of a general disclaimer, everything we're talking about, this is still a draft document. So I think everybody realizes that, but just throw it out there. Regulation two oh eight, which flips the page to two ten, agricultural resource production and extractive activities. Tennessee is the comment, Tennessee is a right-to-farm state, and it's imperative to see a legal determination as to the impact of this zoning on that right. Our response generally is, yes, we agree. Tennessee is a right-to-farm state. Agricultural uses are protected by state law, which is TCA six dash fifty-four dash one twenty-six. Uh, chapter eleven of our ordinance, section one, eleven oh one R, also exempts all agricultural barns, sheds, whatnot, from bulk and yard requirements, and no building permit is required. And that's typically what we do now. I mean, whenever we have agricultural barns, agricultural uses now are permitted with a five-acre minimum lot size in the R fifteen zone. Any of the structures they wanna put there, they're not, there's no setbacks, no permits required. We do require a zoning compliance form, just so we can stamp it as agricultural, they take it down to codes, codes files it, they don't require a permit. And that's currently how it works. They also don't count for determination of square footage for detached accessory structures. You know, if somebody has agricultural barns on their property but wants to put up a garage, they don't have to fall under those, uh, they don't have to count the square footage of those barns to determine if they've done over that amount, and that's gonna be how it is in our proposed document as well.
What did you say the five-acre minimum pertains to?
Agricultural uses in our current zoning code.
They're still allowed anywhere else?
I'm sorry?
They're still allowed.
Yes, and they're still allowed.
If you had three acres and you want to have a cow, there's nothing in this order that would prevent you from doing that. It just, three acres or two acres or anything.
This means if I wanna put a barn on, I gotta come see you.
Yes.
Yes.
And five acres is where we draw the line for the exemption from, you know, the county requirements.
Right, is it accessory, or is it a barn? Yeah, and that's, again, a five acres is what we currently use, so that's, there's no change there.
We discussed this in a previous work session, if you remember, and discussed the Right to Farm Act and all of that.
Right. As far as our summary of changes to chapter two, uh, we did propose, we talked about this a little bit ago, and two oh six L, general personal services. Uh, you'll see what we've done there. Uh, you know, it says, the original language was, these activities do not include the storage or sale of goods or other property unless otherwise permitted herein. We just kind of softened the wording a little bit. These activities allow the storage and sale of goods as permitted by this ordinance. We're really saying the same thing, we're just kinda changed the, we made it more of the permissive than exclusionary, I guess, in sounding in that regard, so. Any questions or anything else on chapter two? All right.
Doug, before we start on that one, I noticed there's some sharing of these, and there are a couple of extra copies up here, if anybody else needs a, needs a copy.
Thank you, we ran out of our extra copies, so.
Anybody else that needs a copy?
All right. If there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and move on to chapter three. Chapter three is the establishment of the districts and provisions for the official zoning map. One of the comments we received on this, it says, in this section, it became apparent that no existing mobile home parks were being recognized. The map over-recognizes the few quarry sites and disregards these small parks. Uh, this needs to be readdressed, how much land area and how many parcels have been downzoned by this map. Are, and there's a, there's a couple of different issues in this question, so we'll kinda try to take them one by one. As far as the mobile homes are concerned, uh, it's doubtful that any of the existing mobile home parks in the county, unincorporated county, can meet the current standards in our existing resolution, let alone the standards in the proposed zoning ordinance. Most of the mobile home parks that are out there have been in existence for quite some time, uh, even predating the ordinance we're currently under. Uh, the parks would just continue to be nonconforming under the new regulations, regardless of how they're zoned, uh, so they have not been disregarded. Uh, they will be zoned, they're zoned R fifteen today, excuse me, will continue to be zoned in a similar manner under the proposed regulations. Uh, you see a couple of charts there on the, on your page. It says, please see the charts below for percentages of property currently zoned as compared to how they are zoned under the proposed map. The first chart is actually the proposed map, whereas the second, the longer chart, actually shows the percentages of the existing. Uh, you'll notice there's a little difference between the two, and the big difference for that is the core property, uh, is just being left alone under our new regulations as opposed to how we handle it today. So that's the only difference between those. Uh, that's why the acreages are different. But you'll, you can see what we're proposing, uh, you know, from what's existing to what is currently proposed on the zoning map. And unless you have questions, I'll just let you look at that and I'll continue on. Uh, regulation three oh two A, which is on page three dash two, says, the official zoning map is incorporated by reference into this ordinance. It says, what was the process for creating the new zoning map? It certainly does not conform with the comprehensive plan or anything we've seen before. And our response to this, to this is, the new residential zoning is based on the long-range map within the comprehensive plan. The RL district respond, corresponds, excuse me, with the rural character area, while the RM district corresponds with the suburban and urban character areas. Uh, the comprehensive plan does show the potential for higher densities as you get closer toward, to the municipalities. Of course, that's because they have sewer service as extended to some of those areas. Uh, we do feel, however, that the areas closer in at this point may not be ready for the higher-density zoning like a multifamily zone or something like that, uh, without proper infrastructure in place. Now, as we, as time goes on, if we see those infrastructure being extended out to those areas, of course, zoning changes can take place, like anything else. Uh, if they're within the urban character area, that doesn't necessarily require any kind of a map amendment, because the urban character area does envision, uh, non-residential-type uses. Uh, the new commercial and industrial zones that we show on the proposed zoning map, we've based those on the existing land uses in zoning districts. What we did was, we reviewed previous zoning cases and also tax records to determine the present and also historic use of the property. What we tried to do was take the most restrictive zone that would still allow the use and zone the property in that manner. So example, as we put here, a small neighborhood market would be zoned, commercial neighborhood, instead of a more intense commercial zone such as commercial general, even though it would be allowed in both zones. We tried to take the most restrictive zone where the property was still allowed. The long-range map did include several mixed-use centers. Of those rural nodes, as you recall, there's rural centers, uh, village neighborhood centers, and also a employment activity center. The only one we really put a lot of on the ground was the employment activity center, and that was at the Epsom Road interchange, where there's already a good amount of infrastructure, sewer, and everything in place. In Christiana, and I think in Milton, there were a couple of areas, a couple of parcels where we did recommend some of the rural character, the rural node, um, rural center zoning, excuse me, but not for the whole area, just for some small parcels where there was already existing commercial uses on the property. So there is a little bit of that on the zoning map, but not, not a lot. So again, most of these centers, we feel are not currently on, they're not on the zoning map, because we don't feel that they are ready for it yet. We feel that they need closer study, kinda what we talked about when we were talking about the staff's work schedule for the upcoming year. These are things we would like to eventually undertake, but are hesitant to do so until we get through these processes that we're working through right now. So that's the reason why. We feel it's, again, the map that you see in the land use, the comprehensive plan is a future land use map. We never expected the zoning of the county to look exactly like that map day one, which is why the, again, the commercial uses are fairly limited. You don't see all the commercial nodes and everything, just automatically zoned that Uh, one of another comment we received on this item says, please recall that at the very first steering committee meeting, the members were asked to vote on the most important issues in long-term planning. Says the issue that garnered the most votes by far was protect property rights. Says the consultant somehow, in quotations, left that out of the first draft, and it was even pointed out at the time that it was too important an issue to omit. Says now the proposed zoning map downzones thousands of parcels in the county without any notice, consultation, or request from the property owners. For example, the couple that purchased a small parcel for the purpose of someday building their retirement home would greatly, be greatly disappointed that suddenly the opportunity was taken away and their property is now worthless, although they would be required to continue to pay taxes on it. This would be a gregarious property rights issue that surely would be challenged. Our response to this is, you know, as discussed in the comments for section one oh two L, the zoning ordinance just says, zoning ordinances, excuse me, try to strike a balance between the rights of owners and surrounding owners. Each community has to decide where to draw that line. Says after much discussion and public input, the planning commission voted to adopt the plan in April, comprehensive plan, April two thousand eleven, which did show the distinction between the suburban character area, urban character area, and also the rural areas. But that being said, we also feel that that example in that, with the, the couple that purchased their parcel, uh, we felt that that was somewhat misleading. It says, a couple would still be allowed to build their retirement home on an existing vacant lot, even if it was less than one acre in the RL zone, which, again, you'd have to look at section thirteen oh three, which deals with nonconforming lots. They would still be allowed to build a house on that property, even if it was less than an acre. Uh, the one-acre minimum only applies to the creation of new lots. So we didn't necessarily have any suggested amendments to the text within chapter three, and I'm sure this is something that will come up a little later as well, but on the map, the zoning map, what we have done in regards to the quarries, uh, you'll recall that, then there was a lot of discussion on that at the December twelfth meeting. We have made the quarries, we have taken them out of the industrial zoning and have zoned them all RM at this point, so they would just all be nonconforming. And really, that's not really a drastic change as to what, most of them already were zoned. There were a couple that did have industrial zoning on them, but for the most part, two of them were already zoned residential. One of them, actually, the one the county owns, was zoned commercial. And then the, there's one on, um, Twin Oak Drive that did have industrial zoning on it, but again, we're trying to be consistent with all the different quarries, so we've recommended at this point that they all be zoned for residential multi, um, RM, residential middle, medium density. So that change has been made on the map. So, and there's a copy of the draft map on the, on the wall behind me here. So I will, uh, say that we have made that change. And that chart that's within your, um, on page six, you said you updated that, right? Yeah, that was updated to reflect that, so.
Was it, you know, there was some comment?
Can you pull the mic toward you a little bit? Yeah, thanks.
You know, there was some comment at the last evening meeting in December about the buffer zone or the footage in regards to quarries. Have we addressed that, or is that?
It's further in, but yes, we have. But again, we've made another recommendation on that. It's, it's, I think it's one of the last, I think it's on the last page, actually, so, but, uh, but yes, we did recommend some increased numbers on that.
You mentioned that the new regulations wouldn't affect any new lots being created, but in a way it could. I mean, say there's-
Well, I think, wait, wait just a second. I think I said the, the regulations would, are you talking in regards to the RL, and I said that would re-
I'm talking about this last comment about the downzoning of lots to basically the residential local and-
Right.
You know, he said, he said any new lots, any lots would only affect the creation of new lots.
Right, yes, yes.
But say if there was a individual out there that owned an acre and a half, and they have never split it off, but they already had, always had intention of building a house for them and their child, or something like, or family member, never gonna split that into two lots, well, would this change? They can't.
Well, yes, you're right, it would.
Because, so that is taking something away from somebody. They would have to go to the BZA or even if-
Well, they would have to get a rezoning, but they, they couldn't go to the BZA for that. That'd have to be a rezoning of property.
Well, that is a, that is a significant change. You know, just because they haven't gone through the legwork of splitting off the lots before this happens, then that is a, is a significant change out there.
And that's, it's part of the deliberations here, that's something that, I mean, eventually you're gonna have to make a recommendation on, one way or the other.
I'm just saying that that is a, it is a change. You know, and on a, on a big farm, you know, that some farmer's gonna sell for development someday for his retirement money or something, then instead of having a hundred acres, having the potential of three hundred lots, he's got a hundred lots now, you know, maximum, besides taking out for roads and infrastructure and things like that, but.
Yes, I mean, I mean, you're, you're correct. I mean, that is.
That's probably the major policy decision that you'll have to make. I mean, you knew it was coming, but, uh, it is the, the major decision, and it's a, it's a policy issue on how you deal with changing the zone from, from, uh, to increase lot sizes or to have different classifications that affect that.
All right, well, if there's no other questions on chapter three, we'll go into chapter four, which start getting into the specific regulations for residential districts. And we're gonna see, again, we're gonna see several comments dealing with the purpose state- purpose statements. I won't spend just a whole lot of time on our response to that, just to say the same thing we said back in chapter one, purpose statements are not meant to be regulations. They're just meant to describe what the zone is for. And then as you turn forward in the document itself, it kind of gives you an overview of what's expected and what's allowed in that zone. But the first regulation, again, 401, being section four, page 401, says the residential districts established in this ordinance are designed to promote and protect the health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and other aspects of the general welfare. Additionally, the residential districts established by this ordinance are designed to meet the housing needs of the present and expected future population, to protect residential areas against flood, fire, explosions, toxins, noxious matter, and other objectionable influences, to promote the most desirable use of land in accordance with the adopted comprehensive plan, and to protect existing agricultural activities and encourage farmland preservation. The first comment says the language is far too broad. Says it is not the job of government to define what is moral, convenient, or to determine anyone's prosperity. Prosperity is determined by the free market. When government does it, it is socialism and turns government into God. People are no longer free to pursue happiness by their own definition, and now government is attempting to define what makes us happy. Again, this is not meant to be a regulation. It's just a purpose statement. And that's really all I'm going to say about that. 402B, which is specifically regarding the RL low-density residential, says this district is designed to provide suitable areas for low-density residential development characterized by an open appearance. The residential development will consist of single-family detached dwellings and accessory structures. This district also includes community facilities, public utilities, open spaces, including agricultural activities which serve specifically the residents of this district or which are benefited by an open residential environment without creating objectionable or undesirable influences upon residential developments. The application of this district is appropriate in the rural area of the adopted comprehensive plan. The comment was the RL classification has been placed on many properties. One of its purposes here is to allow agricultural activities which serve specifically the residents of the district. This statement must be wrong. Our response was we agree that that particular statement is out of place, and we recommend it be removed. After looking at it and reading it over a couple different times, we felt that was a valid comment. And again, we will, we'll go over the changes a little further on, but we do recommend that be removed. Regulation 402C, which deals specifically with the RM medium-density residential district, I'm not going to just read everything on here, but says generally the residential development will consist of single-family detached dwellings, accessory structures, includes community facilities, public utilities, open spaces, which serve specifically residents of this district. Says the application of this district is appropriate in a suburban or urban character area of the adopted comprehensive plan. Says the RM classification, which is basically the old R15, doesn't even mention agriculture uses as a purpose. Our response is we agree that there will be agricultural properties in areas that are proposed to be zoned RM. Therefore, we do recommend adding a statement, agricultural uses, to the purpose statement of the RM zoning district. And again, this would be consistent with the current R15 zone. So no changes would be made there. So again, we agreed with, with that statement as well. The next comment on this particular section, terminology such as benefited, objectionable, and undesirable are so open to interpretation, it can lead to abuse and very personal, subjective targeting by the planning commission. Our response to that, again, it's a general description, should not be construed as a regulation. The specific standards that are located in the remaining portions of chapter four and throughout the zoning are what will be enforced. The planning commission will not be making any kind of subjective, personal decisions on the zoning based on that particular item in the zoning. It'll be based on the regulations, not the purpose statements. Section 403, says the uses and structures indicated may be permitted within the various residential districts only in the manner specified and subject to any specific design criteria that apply. The comment was define specific design criteria. Our response to this is design criteria can include such things as a percentage of brick and masonry construction, it can include roof pitch, et cetera. I mean, there's a wide variety of things design guidelines can, can regulate. As written, our zoning ordinance has no such criteria at this point. So none would apply here. This really is more of a catch-all statement. You know, if there are some regulations, design regulations that apply, but at this point, there are none that are written in here, and we're not proposing to write any. In the future, if the planning commission and board of commissioners decided they wanted to see some sort of design controls in residential zones, or any zone for that matter, they could be amended in using the same process we're going through right now. You know, amendments being brought before the planning commission for their recommendation, those recommendations being made to the board of commissioners, and the board of commissioner voting yea or nay on the proposal. But as of this time, there really aren't any design criteria for residential districts or really any of the other districts in here. So again, it's more of a catch-all statement.
Doug, didn't we have some from the Christiana land use plan?
There were some that were in there, yes. We have not incorporated those into the document because it really felt like those were more specifically aimed toward the Christiana Bacchanal area than the county as a whole. I mean, if that's something that the planning commission would like to look into, I think we should study that further, not at this point.
Yeah, I don't want to abandon the work those committees did. And so I'm just thinking about as you go back, and that's one of the projects that you said you'd like to do even after this, is go into those individual communities and figure out, you know, what works in that node.
Exactly, exactly.
And so I'd like to maybe, you know, bring those back into, into that work.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's kind of what our intent is. You know, obviously, what works in Christiana may not necessarily work in Last Casses, which may not work in Milton, so forth and so on. So, yeah, I think those, kind of what I envision over time, now this will be years in the making, is probably if, if those areas do desire to have some design criteria like that, that I can envision a couple of different zoning districts of the rural centers. Like you'd have rural center dash Christiana, rural center dash Last Casses. That way, you're applying what's specific to those areas only to those areas, you know, not countywide. So, well, point well taken.
Thanks.
403B, special exceptions permitted for consideration by the Board of Zoning Appeals are listed in the land use activity table in appendix B. The comment was land use activity table in appendix B has not been made available to the public. Our response is that's not accurate. The land use activity table is available and has been available as part of the draft zoning ordinance, available online, and has been since it was posted on the county's website. It's not a separate document. It's within the zoning document itself. The person who emailed this comment to us through the web design, through the web comment form, I actually emailed them back specifically to let them know that it was in there. I never did hear back from the person. I'm assuming they got the message, but if not, hopefully they're watching today and realize that, yes, it is within the document itself. It's not a separate, separate document. So. 404, table one, that is on page 4-4. It says a district called RL conservation subdivision shows up here, but no purpose statement has been given. Says our staff, our response to that is conservation subdivisions are discussed in more detail in chapter 11, section 1107, starting on page 11-66. To eliminate any confusion, I think we did move that. Yeah, to eliminate confusion in the new draft, which we have not posted yet, but the newest draft, we're going to move that over to this chapter, chapter four, since it's dealing with residential anyway. But we haven't at this point. The draft that you have and it's currently available, I mean, we figured we'd make all the changes at once and do it as opposed to over, you know, go through half the document, make changes, then half the document, make more, and then repost another one. That would just get confusing over time. But, but we could move that, and are planning on moving that to chapter four. Comment, another comment on the table, says this table does not make clear what current zoning is. Says however, it seems the new zoning is taking away and not giving property owners anything. Zoning ordinances, our response to this is that zoning ordinances do not typically list regulations from previous zoning ordinances or zoning documents. This would have the potential to get very confusing. Now, that being said, the current R15 zoning district, which has setbacks of the front 40 feet, sides 10 feet, and rear 20 feet, that is the exact same proposal for the proposed RM district, which is essentially the R15. So as far as that goes, we're not necessarily changing anything. Also, in the, in that RM zone, the maximum height, lot width, and minimum area also proposed to say the same. Now, when you look at the different zoning districts, there is a little bit of change among them, like the AR, the agricultural residential. Of course, you have a minimum lot size of five acres. The lot widths are a little larger. The setbacks are a little, little larger, not much. The minimum height, maximum height, excuse me, is the same. Maximum lot coverage is the same, as you can see on that chart. Really, the RL and the RM, I'm sorry, RL and the AR have the both, the same lot coverages. The RM, which is our R15, again, is pretty much identical to the R15 as it's currently written. The RMF, which is residential multifamily, the setbacks are a little reduced, just recognizing the fact that you may see smaller lot sizes in those districts. The maximum height's a little larger. Maximum lot coverage is larger as well, to take into account the smaller lot sizes. And then again, for mobile home park, that's a little different as well, but not a whole lot different than what we currently allow. So again, typically, you don't see what is old and what is new in a zoning ordinance because that would just get confusing. So, but just, it doesn't, in my, in our opinion at least, the staff's opinion, they're fairly consistent with what we currently are regulating. Any questions on the chart before we move on? Okay. Let's see. Okay, 405A, it says all approved non-residential uses within the AR, RL, RM, RMF, and MHP districts, or all of the residential districts. Exterior storage of goods, materials on other property is prohibited. Says waste disposal receptacle shall be located in the rear of the principal buildings within an enclosure that is constructed of materials similar to the principal building. Such enclosures, excuse me, shall be screened from public view, which is our fence regulations in chapter 11. Says the comment is the issue of enclosing the garbage cans and telling business or homeowners where to put their garbage cans is an absolute ridiculous waste of taxpayer money. It's a waste of money for the business owner to have to deal with and a waste of tax dollars to have to police this. Our response to this is first of all, the regulation does not apply to private residential garbage cans, only to approved non-residential uses in residential areas such as a church, bed and breakfast, something to that effect. The intent of this regulation is really to keep just outside storage or any disposal area screened from adjacent residential property. I mean, basically what we're saying, we're just saying we don't want you to have all your storage in your waste areas somewhere where everybody can just see where they are. You know, this is really no different than how we screen for commercial uses in commercial districts next to residential areas. We're just realizing that there are some uses that are permitted in residential areas that are going to have the need for some outside storage possibly or waste disposal. So we're just treating them the same as we would a commercial business and screening those areas from adjacent property. That's really the only regulation, that's the only reason for that regulation. And again, it does not apply to private homeowners. I mean, it's, it's pretty explicit right in there that it does, does only approve non-residential uses, not for private landowners or residential uses, excuse me. Okay. 405B, dealing with fire protection, says for all approved non-residential uses within the residential zone AR, RL, and RM, a fire hydrant is required to be located within 1,000 feet of a proposed development measured from the property line. Says in the event water lines providing service to a proposed development cannot support a fire hydrant based on a determination by the water provider, the applicant shall be required to install a sprinkler system in accordance with all applicable building codes, including NFPA 13D, also to include an audio alarm flow switch to be approved by the Rutherford County Building Codes Department. If the water lines are available or able, excuse me, to support a fire hydrant according to the water provider, then one shall be installed. It says this requirement shall, of this subsection, so not apply to existing developments, but any change or of use or expansion on a lot will be required to meet the regulations or requirements, excuse me, of this subsection. The comment we received on this was this shows up in several instances, and I think it should provide the specific pressures and volumes needed. Hopefully, the county commission has adopted NFPA 13D if it is being required as a standard, and does this code give the formula for water flows needed to support the sprinkler system? Our response to this is we actually sat down with representatives from Consolidated Utility District who provide the majority of the water service in the county area. Says conversations with officials from CUD, and I think she's already gone, indicated that they were more comfortable not having any specific pressures and volumes listed because there's other factors that they look at in determining whether a water line can support a fire hydrant other than just pressure and volume. So we actually had it a little more specific originally, but when we asked them about it, they asked us to word it in this way. That's why it is the way that it is before you today. So I just want to make sure that everyone's aware The next several comments deal with development standards for mobile home communities, which in the new draft are 405C1, or beginning 405C, I should say. Generally speaking, in regards to the mobile home park regulations, which start on page 4-5, the regulations have not changed much from the current regulations in the zoning resolution. There are a few modifications. There are some, a few things that are slightly different, but this is not really what I would consider just an overhaul of how we do them today. And quite frankly, we, there's real, there's none on the map now as, as the ordinance is written and the district is applied. There's nothing on the zoning map even currently on that. But the first regulation, 405C1A, says the construction or extension of a mobile home community may not commence within the area of jurisdiction of this ordinance until a building permit has been issued by the Director of Building Codes. Says a building permit may be issued for a mobile home community only upon approval of the required zoning district and approval by the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission of the site plan. The comment was who approves a zoning district? And our response to that is rezoning applications are first considered by the planning commission, where a recommendation is made to the board of commissioners. The board of commissioners then makes the final decision on all rezoning matters. That is currently how it's done today. That's how it'll be done in the future. That is not changing. 405C2A1, says no part of the community shall be used for non-residential purposes except such uses as are required by the direct servicing and well-being of community residents and for the management and maintenance of all, of the, excuse me, of all the facilities. Nothing contained in this section shall be deemed as prohibiting the sale of a mobile home located on a mobile home stand and connected to pertinent utilities. The comment was this is nonsensical. No part of the community shall be used for non-residential purposes. Our response to this is the section concerns mobile home parks and basically states that no part of an approved mobile home park can be used for commercial purposes, such as a retail store or something to that effect. Basically, all we're saying is if you have a mobile home park zone, you can't open a corner market in the middle of your mobile home park. That, that's really all that particular section states. 405C2B, says no mobile home community shall be approved which contains less than three acres in area or has less than 15 mobile home spaces. Comment was how do you arrive a three acre minimum for mobile home park and what is current, I guess, meaning what is our current regulation? Our response to that is the current minimum acreage for a mobile home park in our existing zoning resolution is three acres. So that's not changing under the proposed ordinance. I can't tell you exactly how that number was, come about under the existing code. That's just what we've been under since I've been here. Now, there is no current regulation for the number of mobile homes, a minimum number of mobile homes. So that is, that is different. That is new. But as far as the acreage minimum is concerned, that's currently what's on the books.
Where'd the number come from?
Where, the, the 15?
15, yeah.
I believe that was part of the draft that was originally submitted to us from some past ordinances that Mr. Terry had worked on. I believe that's correct. I don't know if...
Just a recommendation, whatever.
I don't know. I don't know if that's good or bad. I'm not in the mobile home business. I mean, but if somebody wants to have 10, that's not allowed. You gotta have a minimum of 15.
As, as written. Now, again, we don't currently do that. If you want to take that out, we can certainly do that.
Wondering what the reason is behind it. I mean, if somebody's got...
Reason would be, the opinion is that it takes a certain number in magnitude in order to make a successful operation.
That's getting back to the business plan, which is the property owner's own business and not our business. You know, I mean, if somebody's got three and a half acres and wants to put eight mobile homes on it, if they met the other requirements, I don't see it's our business in telling them that. But I'm just wondering what...
We can take, we can take that out.
What the mindset is, the 15. I mean, I'm okay with the three acres. That was already there before. However, we're not starting on every half-acre tract of land, but I just, I'm just looking to be convinced. I mean, I, I...
And I mean, quite frankly...
I know, I don't like the 15.
Okay. I mean, like I said, that, we can, we don't do that currently. That can be taken out.
Been a problem, has there?
No. And again, just that being said, the current mobile home parks that we have, they're not zoned mobile home park now, even though we have an existing zone. Most of these have been non-conforming for years. So I just don't think, even if we have that in there, if we don't have that in there, I just don't think we're going to start seeing a rush of new mobile home parks come in. I mean, we haven't seen one since I've been here. I've been here over five years. We have not seen a new one. So I, I mean, as far as staff is concerned, we can take out the 15, and that's fine with us. If that's what, that's, well, let's go ahead and make a note.
I just see a rule with no, no meaning there. I mean, either convince me or, or let's take it out.
We'll just, we'll just send the sentence after three acres in area and then, or has less than 15 mobile home park spaces. We'll just, that part will be just eliminated. Again, that, I don't think that's going to affect anything anyway. Like I said, I just doubt we're going to see a rush of new mobile home parks in the county, so.
It's kind of like it varies from community to community, and if you don't want it in one community, fine. If you do want it in other...
Well, our other codes require, you know, a double-wide... Well, our other codes require, you know, a double-wide mobile home, and this and that and other, and it's pretty, you gotta jump through a lot of hoops, put a mobile home up anyway, you know, and stuff, so.
No, that's fine with us, we can take that out.
What's it gonna say now?
It'll just say, "No mobile home community shall be approved, which contains less than three acres in area." That's all it'll say, it'll stop after that.
So, if we don't have a number on it, like Will was suggesting, you could put one on it and call it a mobile home park?
No, I don't, I don't think so. It would probably be more. We'll have to look back at our definitions and make sure we define mobile home park, 'cause I'm not sure if we actually call out a number. And if we don't, that's probably something we need to... Mobile or manufactured-
I don't know if it'll get at the next meeting, but I'm just looking for an explanation for the 15.
Yeah, the, our current, we do have a definition in our proposed zoning for a mobile or manufactured home community, but doesn't have any kind of a number, just says a development that is designed and constructed to accommodate mobile homes.
It is plural, though.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't catch one.
Two.
Probably two, right. But if you would like that to be, if you'd like a specific number in that definition, let us know, we can certainly amend that in there.
If there's two in a mobile home park, they've gotta do the exact same thing as two separate mobile homes going out there, do they not? I mean...
I suppose they would, yeah.
Well, a mobile home park would have development standards, I don't think you could help meet those development standards with two homes or five homes, or whatever.
If they want to meet the requirement, the development standards for two lots, then that's better for us, you know, that's, that's less intrusive on a neighborhood. If I had to have mobile homes across the street from me, you know, a bunch of them clustered, I'd much rather have four than 15. Or, 'cause that's just less traffic, less people, you know, that's everything else. So if they can meet the, meet the standards and have six mobile homes, then congratulations, I mean.
Then that's, then that's what we'll do? But then, that's fine? Let's see. Okay, 405C3A, under general characteristic, it says, "The limits of each mobile home space shall be marked on the ground by suitable means. Location of lot limits on the ground shall be the same as shown on approved plans, no space shall be smaller than 5,000 square feet. The comment being, again, government is dictating what the market should. So far, mobile home parks have been able to get along without anyone in government telling them how much land they have to give up in order to be successful. If a tenant in a mobile home park doesn't like the size of the lot, they leave and find a park they like. Our response for that is, the current minimum lot area for a mobile home park in our regulations is 4,000 square feet. Although the proposed minimum is 5,000 square feet under the proposed, this could be changed in order to remain consistent, which I think we actually made the proposal to do. We actually proposed to move that back to 4,000 square feet, similar to what we, discussion we just had. It is important to note, however, that there is a minimum lot size that currently exists, that we just didn't make that up. Okay, so, let's just sort of be clear on that. It's also something, and this goes to any of these regulations you see in here, it's important to note that this would apply only to new mobile home parks that were established after this had been adopted. Legally established mobile home parks in existence, whenever the new regulations are established, would still be considered non-conforming or grandfathered uses, consistent with Chapter 13, which we've discussed earlier, and also the state law. So, what we're talking about here are for new mobile home parks, not what's existing out there, this is not going to be applied retroactively. Okay, those will be allowed to continue.
So is it a 5,000 square foot minimum?
We're recommending 4,000, what's, what's currently on the books.
So we're basically staying what we've got?
Yes.
We stay at three acres and 4,000.
That's currently what we have, right.
Hey Doug.
Sir.
Going back to the 15 mobile home spaces, is there any research provided as to why the other counties had those other numbers? Or specific numbers, rather?
Not that I've seen, but Mr. Terry may have some information on that.
Was there an explanation as to why?
As to why the-
There was 12, or 14, or 20, or whatever, whatever the number was, was it arbitrary or based on, on some history?
No, it's not based upon any detailed research, it's just a, kind of an accumulation of regulations that have occurred from community to community over time. You know, generally speaking, mobile home parks have generated a lot of opposition when they're proposed. And so, the standards are trying to, are intended to try to provide a suitable environment for the mobile home occupants, as well as to provide less of an opposition factor from the adjoining property owners in order to allow that type use to occur. And so, when you say you're going to have a certain sized space and certain amount of open space, that's what the intent there is. It's just, it's not saying that, that 5,000 square feet for a space is the absolute minimum based upon scientific data, no.
I, I hear what Will is saying, but, but there also seems to be some, some type of, of meaning behind, or there should be some type of meaning behind having a particular number. And I, and I didn't know if there was any data to back that.
No scientific data, just kind of an evolutionary process.
I have a question to kind of along those same guidelines, and it was a little bit higher up, where it talks about there being no commercial use in that area. I know, like in Florida, for example, you've got some communities that are really geared more towards the elderly, and, you know, for all intents and purposes, there are mobile home parks, but I think they call them something fancy, or patio homes or something, I don't know. But, but in my mind, I'm thinking it's a lot, a lot, a lot along the same lines as a planned unit development, where they do have some, like little neighborhood services that they provide. So, the way we've got this worded, it wouldn't allow for that. If you wanted to do an upscale, you know, park geared towards a certain population, the way this is written, you couldn't do that. So would they just call it something else, or would it still be a mobile home park?
Well-
Or do a campground or something, like, a lot of those are travel trailer type things, and this is sort of the-
This is specific for a mobile home park development, right.
Permanently, but semi-permanently.
Right. Now, I guess in response to your question, Ms. Allen, is, if somebody came in with something that was significantly different from the mobile home park regulations that are in here, and wanted to do, like you said, like a retirement-type community, maybe not necessarily mobile homes, but smaller type homes or something like that?
Prefabricated, I mean, they, for all intents and purposes, they look like mobile homes, but they have them decorated or skirted or whatever nicely, so that it's not that. But I, in terms of, you know, whether you technically call it a mobile home or not, I don't know.
Right. I mean, there's, there is always the ability, if somebody wanted commercial uses within a development, there is always the ability to go for a planned unit development. You know, and there's, well, I don't know if we'll get to those today, but there's a number of comments we've had on the, as you have saw through the document on our PUD standards as well. But, but that is, that is always an option. You know, I'm not saying that it's necessarily, just because a mobile home park wants to do something a little different than what's allowed in the mobile home, that they should automatically be, yeah, we're gonna go for a planned unit development. Of course, there is oversight on that from the Planning Commission, about looking at this, saying, "Look, this is really just a mobile home park, you just want to put a commercial area there." You know, of how you balance that, but I think on the lines of what you're talking about, that would probably be more appropriate as a planned unit development. Okey-dokey. Let me see. 405C3, outdoor living area, says, "Each mobile home lot shall be provided with an outdoor living and service area. Such area shall be improved as necessary to assure reasonable privacy and comfort. The minimum area should be not less than 300 square feet with at least, with a, with a least dimension of 15 feet," and that may be misworded a little bit. Uh, the comment was, "Government is dictating what the free market should, government is actually telling the property or how much land to give away for outdoor living area." Our response to this is that the intent of the regulation is just to allow individual mobile home plots with a small yard. So if a family has a, owns the mobile home or lives there, they have a small plot to utilize for family purposes and for privacy. That's really the only intent of that regulation.
Is that 300 feet included in the 4,000 feet above, or is that in addition to-
It would all be inclusive, yes, it would all be inclusive. Uh, 405, yeah, 405CF, C through F, I'm sorry, 405C5C through F. Standards for solid waste disposal systems, service buildings, fire protection, insect and rodent control within, within new mobile home parks. What are the current requirements? I didn't list them out, because it would have been a fairly sizable response. But we do have requirements for service facilities in our current zoning resolution, which can be found in Sections 23.11 and 23.12. Generally speaking, the proposed regulations are similar to what currently exists. There are requirements for those things in the existing regulations, as there are in the new regulations as well. But again, I didn't list them all out, but they are in existence, if you'd like me to go into more detail with them, I can certainly do that, they're, they're-
There's no substantive change?
No, there's not. The current, I'm sorry, subgrade, 405C6E, subgrade, the subgrade shall be, this is in dealing with the, the subgrade of the, the base of the area. Subgrade shall be well-drained, uniformly graded, and compacted. Base shall consist of crushed stone and gravel, six inches in depth, compacted surface. Surface shall be paved with asphaltic concrete plant, plant mix, one and one-half inches thick, compacted. What are the current standards, is the comment. Uh, our response to that is, "Current requirements call for all private and public roads to be consistent with the Rutherford County subdivision regulations. The county does not enforce a standard for private streets necessarily, but these standards are the same as the requirement for private parking lots and also public roads." So this isn't some new standard that was brought out for this regulation, it's pretty much the current standard, according to our engineering department. 405C7, says, "All mobile home park developments shall be provided with safe, convenient, all-season pedestrian walks, a minimum of five feet in width, durable and convenient to maintain. Sudden changes in alignment and gradient shall be avoided. A common walk system shall be provided to maintain between locations where pedestrian track, traffic is concentrated. Such common walks shall have a minimum of five, uh, width of five feet, excuse me. Individual walks, all, as part as, this is the second part of that regulation, individual walks. All mobile home spaces shall be connected to common walk, streets, driveways, and parking spaces by individual walks, and they shall have a minimum of two feet." And the comment is, "Does this mean sidewalks are required, are being required?" Our response is essentially, yes, it calls for safe, convenient, all-season pedestrian walks, a minimum of five feet in width, which are durable and convenient to maintain in all mobile home parks. They have not mentioned, uh, construction materials. This does not mean, again, that existing mobile home parks will have to be brought into compliance. They will be non-conforming, they will not fall under this, this will be for any new mobile home parks that are ever proposed in the county.
Are we currently requiring sidewalks in mobile homes?
I don't believe we do, just looking through our regulations, I don't believe that's part of it.
Don't require sidewalks in subdivisions?
No.
But we're gonna require sidewalks in a mobile home park.
Again, this is up for public debate.
The intent there is, generally speaking, your mobile home parks are gonna have a higher density. Buildings are gonna be closer together, and that the, therefore, the sidewalks are justified. And I might clarify one point here, uh, these overall design standards generally come from, from research and documents from national organizations, such as design standards for mobile home parks, which is where it came from. Then you adapt those to the local needs, and that's what we're basically doing.
But how many of those nation, I mean, I'm not saying I disagree, but how many of those other municipalities are gonna require sidewalks in their subdivisions?
It varies.
You know, it's gonna, a lot of them are. I think Murfreesboro does.
They have a sidewalk policy where they require them-
Some sort of ratio with connector streets?
Yeah, and if it's a through street, how close it is to a school, they look at a number of factors. It's not a, at least when I worked there, now it's been a few years since I've worked there, so that's my, that may have changed, I still know it. But when I worked there, they had a policy, it wasn't really a hard, fast regulation as when they were approved and when they weren't.
So a mobile home park close to a school, close to adjoining sidewalks, and that makes sense to me. But if it's that way out in the country, and it's a, the road doesn't him, him have a, there's not a sidewalk in two miles, I, I wonder if there's a point in having a sidewalk there.
Well, I, just from personal experience, I can support the sidewalk system within a, in a mobile home community, because I have relatives, you know, who have lived in those, and, I mean, you're talking about a lot of people, a lot of traffic, a lot of bike riders in a very intense area. And from a safety standpoint, if those kids see a sidewalk or there's a designated space where they know they're supposed to be on, there's at least a chance they're gonna be safer than if it's just, you know, whoever gets there first, you know, has the right of way. So, um, so just from my own experience, I could absolutely support having a, some kind of a system within the neighborhood, within that community.
It all goes back to money, I mean, it costs money to put sidewalks in.
Right.
Means a lot, that's cost more, rent for more. Most cases, not all, 'cause most cases, somebody's living in a mobile home environment because of economic restrictions, and we're just putting a little bit more hardship on them, you know, you could say they ought to have-
Right.
A swimming pool out there, too, would be great also, for the kids to play and keep them off the streets, but who's gonna pay for it? I mean, I don't know, I mean, I can agree with either side, I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
And like I said, everything that's in here is a draft, I mean, that's why we're having the discussions to begin with. I mean, anything in here can be reworked.
I guess I just feel, the only reason I feel strongly about this is just because I know it from personal experience, and, um, everything else that we've pretty much tried to do for the most part has been for health, safety, well-being, and I don't see anything in here that's more important with health, safety, and well-being than keeping, you know, kids in that small of an area safe, so.
If, if you didn't have it in there, let's just say you had a 15, we use 15, 15-
Had the roads extra wide or something?
15 numbers, yeah, and there weren't sidewalks, where would people walk? They would-
They'd walk in the, in the road, or on the grassy area next to the road, I guess.
From a safety perspective, that, it, it makes more sense that it's, and once again, we're not talking about restricting things that already exist, but things that might happen in the future, and is it good planning? And my suggestion is, it's probably good planning.
And, yeah.
If it's a safety issue, you're gonna peep, not off just the streets and the trailer park, but maybe in the connecting street, uh, out.
And, yeah.
And where's it, where's the break line here, too? Because if you've got a mobile home park of, of 10 homes, that's, is that needed? If you've got 150, is that needed?
That, that makes good sense, too.
And do you put a sidewalk on both sides of the street, or you just put it on one?
And, you know, and I, I think it bears repeating, I know I've said this before, but I'm gonna say it again. I think some of these comments, I, I think there's a misperception out there that if this is approved, that the existing mobile home parks are gonna have to come in conformance with this, that's just not the case. And as much as, some people may think that's the case, it's, it's just not. You know, they are non-conforming, it will be allowed to continue as they've been, and probably will, some of them have been out there 20, 30-plus years, it probably will continue another 20, 30-plus years.
But I can't think of one that's been created in the last 10 or 15 years.
I mean, yeah, there's, there has not been a new one created.
Far and then set limits of smarters, I know one I can think of, and that's within set limits of smarters.
Yeah, I, since I've been here, I've been here a little over five years, there has not been any proposals for one. We have seen some existing ones change ownership, and, you know, some people wanting to, to make some changes to existing, uh, ones, but even that, they're allowed to expand, since they're non-conforming. So, again, what's existing out there does not apply, at least does not apply to those existing mobile home parks.
Could we just maybe take under consideration that we do put a number there? If it's a three, maybe you don't want sidewalks, but if it's 15, maybe you do want sidewalks, something like that?
Yeah, we can, we can do a little more research into that, and see if, if there is a-
If it starts with three, and then they get 15, and now they're like, well, yeah.
I mean, those are, I mean-
And I'm not locked into the sidewalks, I mean, if you make the roads extra wide, if you do whatever, but there needs to be some pedestrian path, there needs to be some allowance. Because what happens is inevitably, even in these mobile home parks, people still have two vehicles, and so, there usually, you know, there's, parking's always tight, so there's always parking on the road. So even if you had sidewalks, another block by parking on the road, you know, I mean, I can see, it can be a real design dilemma, but I just don't think it's something we need to give up on.
Yeah, we can, we can look more into that, and for, at the next, whenever we decide, before we leave, when the next meeting will be, we can have a report or something on that, excuse me.
Doug, on the yard setbacks along the entire periphery of a mobile home community, yards shall be provided as follows, front 40 feet, side 30 feet.
What, what page are you on, Mr.?
Uh, 46.
Thank you. Yes, okay.
D. Front 40 feet, side 30 feet, rear 40 feet. That's 80 down 60.
4,800 feet right there.
4,800.
Yeah, now that's on the, the periphery of the entire, not per mobile home, as I read that at least, let me, let me just make sure I'm reading that right. Oh, the mobile home community, now, now, we're not, just so we understand, we're not talking about the individual-
The whole park.
The whole park, not, not per individual lot, right, not, not individual yard. This is the entire, like, if the park was 100 acres, this would be around the 100 acres, not each individual mobile home.
And where, what is it, where is that stated?
The next bullet, the very next bullet, that you're reading under. Within the interior portions of a mobile home community, no yards except is required to meet other provisions set forth in this section are required.
Okay. We're almost done with this chapter here, if you're just, bear with me for a few more minutes, I think we can get through this. Uh, let's see. Okay, on this comment is, on the same regulation regarding the pedestrian walks, the next comment was, "You're increasing everyone's property insurance-" comment was, "You're increasing everyone's property insurance, has an actuary being consulted with to determine how much the premium will go up. These two sections represent the government getting into the architectural and landscape business. If you don't want mobile home parks in the city, then deal with that as the issue, not by creating this kind of overreaching government." The first response to that is, and they, they may not have meant it when they said "city," I don't know, but the regulations that we're talking about only apply, again, to new mobile home park developments outside the corporate limits of Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne and Eegoville. Our planning jurisdiction does not include the municipalities, just those areas outside of them. Second, we did speak with an insurance agent after seeing this comment, and they did inform us that when, uh, when they're looking at determining insurance rates for mobile home parks, and I talked to someone who actually does insure some of them, he says that, that's not even something they ask. And they said, it doesn't matter then if they have sidewalks or not, it's not something they even consider. So as far as the property insurance rates are concerned, uh, that should have no impact on that, so. Now, going on to 405(c)(8), "Recreation facilities for children of the community shall be provided in locations easily accessible to the living units, where they do not impair the view and privacy of living units. Well-equipped playgrounds shall be provided where is anticipated children will occupy the premises." The comment is, "Are required," and our response is, as written, yes, recreation areas would be required. Now, it doesn't necessarily go into a whole lot of detail as far as that goes, but really, that's pretty much all it says, it just says that they shall be provided, doesn't specifically say what shall be provided or anything like that, but it just says that facilities shall be provided for the community. 405(c)(10), and that's on page four-dash-ten, says, "The appearance and character of the site shall be preserved and enhanced, and enhanced by retaining and protecting existing trees and other site features. Additional new plant materials shall be added for privacy, shade, beauty of buildings and grounds, and to screen out objectionable features. A landscape plan shall be submitted with the site development plan in accordance with the requirements of this ordinance." The comment was, "Who defines objectionable?" After looking at that particular regulation, we felt that you could probably end the sentence after building and grounds, take out that, uh, to screen out objectionable features, and it's not gonna affect the meaning of the section any. So, we have made that recommendation that we do that, is to take that, that little statement out. Excuse me. A 405(c)(12), which is again on page four-dash-ten, "In any mobile home community, when a mobile home is relocated to a different pad within the development or is moved out of the community for any reason, it may be replaced only with another mobile home, which has been certified under the National Housing Construction and Safety Standards Act of nineteen seventy-four. Prior to any such replacement, the owner-operator of the mobile home community shall first obtain a building permit. After the replacement, mobile home has been moved into the community and connected to all utilities, but prior to any occupancy, such mobile home shall be inspected to determine its compliance with the above standard and the adopted NFPA 101 Life Safety Code." The comment was, "Grandfathering for existing mobile home parks, does the county really think it's right to ask for a new building permit when a mobile home replacement is done? Does anyone else pay for a new permit when a home is blown away by a tornado and the owner needs to rebuild? I stated earlier, legally established existing mobile home parks are considered non-conforming uses, and it is required now for building permits to be issued for any replacement or new construction in excess of a hundred and twenty square feet on any property." That's just the building code. You know, we have no control over that, that's, uh, Building and Codes Department, which I think David's already gone. But, uh, anyway, that's, that, that is the current requirement, so that's not something we're adding on there. They have to do that, anyway. A summary of changes for Chapter Four, again, those items we talked about regarding the low-density residential district and also the medium residential, changing the wording around, uh, removing the one statement from 402(b), removing the same statement as well from, uh, 402(c), and then adding agricultural activities, uh, changing the five thousand square foot to four thousand square foot, uh, we'll add the comment about the fifteen mobile home par- uh, mobile home spaces as well. Uh, let's see. And 405(c)(10), that last one we just talked about, ending that sentence after "beauty of buildings," and we just left it at, at "buildings," and then scratched out the rest of the sentence. And then we've moved the conservation subdivisions to Chapter Four, which is a new section, 406. Any other comments or questions or anything on that?
We're up to page fourteen, how far are we going today?
That's up to you.
Chapter Five's pretty short, we could probably get through Five, and then we could pick up at Chapter Seven.
Okay.
Why don't we, why don't we do that, Doug?
Okay.
Not a big about halfway through it.
Yes, that would be about, yeah, you're right, about halfway.
It'll give more folks the opportunity to show up at our, uh, six o'clock meeting.
Right, well, yeah, let's, let's go ahead and go through this, then we'll figure out how we're gonna do the next meeting and everything.
I would like to ask if, if, if it's agreeable out in, in a moment to allow Mr. Cantrell, Rick Cantrell, who has had a lot of input on some of this, and, and I actually went to an informal meeting at his office, and he wanted to, you know, make, bring up a few points that we could study it between now and the next meeting, so I hope we save a few minutes to allow him to make a few statements if the rest of the group is agreeable, and I'll make the appropriate motion at that time.
All right, let's go ahead and go through Chapter Five real quick, and then we'll, we'll do that, if it's, the commission's wish. Okay, five- oh, sec- Chapter Five deals with the Office and Institutional District Regulations. There's not a whole lot here, just a couple things. Uh, Section 501, our, again, our purpose statement, "The Office Institutional District established in this ordinance are designed to promote and protect the health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity and other aspects of the general welfare." I won't read the, the whole thing, it's, it's a general statement, again. The comment is, "Who is going to decide what morals mean, who will determine what is desirable?" Similar to our responses regarding our general purpose statements, this is not a regulation. Uh, the regulations are to be enforced, are located in the remaining portions of Chapter Five. Again, this is no different than any of the other purpose statements, and we'll see some of the, as we continue on with this, we'll see some more of those, too. Uh, 502(a), uh, Office Professional District, says, "This class of district is designed to provide for low-intensity office development and compatible commercial uses such as small retail and business service uses, with a minimum of objectionable characteristics in appropriate locations. This district may be used as a transitional zone between residential and intense commercial areas. Permitted uses are those which tend to attract small numbers of people and generate lower volumes of traffic. Less building bulk is permitted and more open space is required." The comment says, "To give the planning department the discretion to decide what objectionable characteristics are is to give them power over an entire population. This is unacceptable." Uh, our response to that is, again, this is a general description of the Office Professional District, this is not to be construed as a regulation. Permitted uses for the district can be found in Appendix B, and neither the Planning Department nor the Planning Commission will be making any subjective decisions as to what is objectionable." That was the only two comments we had on that, at this point. So, we don't recommend any changes to Chapter Five.
Doug, is this document online anywhere where people...
This one that we're looking at right now, it's not at this point, we just finished this Friday, so we haven't the time to upload it, but...
I'm just thinking, you may wanna consider having this available online, especially for folks who are going in and adding new comments. It might reduce duplicates.
That's, that's fine, we can certainly do that. We'll pick up, uh, our next ma- I guess, uh, do you wanna set the next meeting now, how you wanna do that, or do you wanna have Mr. Cantrell speak first, or?
I'd like to make a motion to allow Mr., suspend the rules to allow Mr. Rick Cantrell to speak.
Have the motion in a second, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh.
In the opposition. Cantrell?
Uh, yes, Scott. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Um, I'll just address just a few things that went over this morning and not go into the subsequent sections of the chapters, uh, 'cause a lot of the comments probably did come from me, and I saw some repeated comments that were in there, and perhaps, when you get to the public hearing portion of it, you know, maybe, uh, we could do it chapter by chapter for people who have comments, rather than going through the whole thing, that, that way you get the people that are making comments specific to the chapters that you're addressing at that time, just a suggestion. Okay? Um, also, Doug, did you, did you provide to the Planning Commission the actual...
Yes.
...documents that people had?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the, the document you emailed me, I guess this was Friday, Thursday, Friday, I guess?
Uh-huh.
That's before them. Received a couple of other, um, items that we put on their table, something from Jay Jackson was up there. Uh, now, the actual emails that we received from the web-based comment, we did not, but they are, the comments that we got are pretty much, they're verbatim in this, so every comment that we received, when, when, when we printed this and distributed it, every comment we received is in this.
Yeah, okay.
Of those bulleted li- now, like, the first thing you submitted at the public hearing, uh, the bulleted list is what we did on here.
Seen it, Doug.
Yeah, and they, and they've, of course, they had that, and every comment you had on that bulleted list is in this, is...
Yeah, I apologize for the typos. I'll get y'all to do those out. One thing, though, is, the latest thing I gave you about was specific about the map itself, and some of the problems with the numbers that I saw in the map, and I hope you, y'all will take time to read that, because there's a chap- a figure in there, I think it's seven point three, that says, "Land area to be consumed in the future, we don't make any change." It says, "We're gonna consume two-hundred-and-one-thousand acres of land by the year twenty thirty-five," and that today, we have developed currently an incorporated area, fifty-five-thousand-one-hundred acres of land area, that accommodates approximately eighty-thousand people. And we're only gonna grow by projections within the comprehensive plan by an additional fifty-thousand-five, fifty-five-thousand people, thereabouts, by the year twenty thirty-five. But the, but that map is projecting that we're gonna use three times amount of land area to accommodate that. So we're gonna use a hundred-and-fifty-thousand acres more by twenty thirty-five to accommodate sixty percent of the population that we're, that we have today in that area. And the reason I bring that up is I'm concerned that, and Ms. Taylor made the comment about, I, I didn't pay attention to that map until that night at the meeting, and she made the comment, "Have you seen this, fix this map? How much land area we're gonna take in?" And I'm concerned that maybe that map might be driving a whole lot of the RL zoning classification. Yeah, I just, I just wanna be sure that it doesn't, that those incorrect numbers or projections don't do that. On, uh, just a few comments about this morning's discussion, uh, my comment about 102.m, about lessening the value of the property, I can tell you that, um, when I analyze a piece of property for a subdivision, one of the po- prospects of, what I'm looking at is, how many units can I get on there? And if I can only, if I'm going from, today, I'm going about one-point-six, one-point-eight units per acre in a subdivision that's zoned to R-15, and I'm gonna go to point-six, point-eight. So, yes, it is gonna increase the value of what a developer would pay somebody for that piece of property. There's no doubt. Plus, the fact that I'm gonna build more street per lot. So I'm gonna have a lot that's probably gonna be a hundred-and-ten feet wide, maybe as much as two-hundred feet wide, 'cause the criteria is, you don't wanna do, uh, four times your width for your depth to have a good lot. Y'all get into flag lot situations often, but that rule of thumb is always applied every, even when we look at subdivisions today, which comes back from some old APA standards. So, I can tell you based on my experience that it will affect values. If I have to go out and get appraisers to do that, then let me know, and we'll get that number for you. My concern about the non-conforming uses was, I, I couldn't find in the comprehensive plan, we talked a lot today about non-conforming us- uses, an existing land use map, it may have been done, I, I don't know if you, if you did one or not, where you went out and said, "We've got, this piece of property is, is the old building that someone used to occupy, and they just went out of business so many years ago," or, you know, I, I was looking to see if you could place a zoning classification on certain properties like that to legitimize them today. So you've got a, some sort of small commercial classification that you could put on that old neighborhood store, so you don't have to come back and struggle with the non-conformity of it. I don't know, but was it?
I guess the answer to that question, Mr. Cantrell, I mean, the answer, the, the quick answer is, yes, we did try to do that.
Okay.
To the extent that we could. Now, there were some situations where a conditional use permit was approved, that maybe, under the new regulations, would be more of an industrial-type use.
Okay.
Okay, we didn't feel it appropriate to zone one parcel in the middle of a residential area industrial, so we left it as a non-conforming use, but that, to the extent that we could, yes, the existing businesses that were out there, if they were already zoned, some sort of a commercial, we tried to, again, zone them, the most restrictive zone that still allowed the use, and in those situations where maybe there was a commercial use on property that was zoned residential, to the extent we could, again, we changed those to commercial. So the, I guess the quick answer is, yes, we did try to do that, but it was impossible, as I'm sure you would, would know, after creating a zoning ordinance, to add, to accurately put everything in a zone that would just automatically fit it.
Okay. I just couldn't, maybe it's the scale of the map and distorted it...
Well, right, and the comprehensive plan, of course, wasn't, not really designed for that purpose to begin with.
No, no, I wanna talk about the comprehensive...
You're talking about the zoning map?
I'm talking about the zoning map itself.
Well, yeah, you're right, I mean, that, that's, if you have questions about any specific property, obviously, we'd be more than happy to talk to you about that.
I don't know the specific ones, but I just don't see a lot of little red dots up there anywhere.
Yeah, but, like you said, the scale of that, I think it's like one inch to a mile or something like that, so the smaller lots, they could get lost.
So anyway, I'm trying to find a way to take away those non-conforming issues and create some stuff.
As we did, as well.
So, um, that's why I made that comment, I just couldn't find the, the backup maps to help me identify that. And yes, it is a personal comment on, uh, what I, I talked about, the use classification system, um, using the general land use criteria, then you go back over to the land use index to see how the land use index fits back into the general classification. And I've just always found that that was cumbersome, when I was administering zoning ordinance, I found it was easier for the public to take the zoning ordinance and look to that chart and find that specific use that says, "Dry cleaning," it's accepted here. So, that is personal. Had a lot of discussion, good discussion about the mobile home parks, and that was brought up evidently by not only me, but others. I see a lot of them in the community. And so I think y'all had a real dis- real good discussion about that, and we'll, we'll get something very good out of that. The other item that I have is, I, I still don't know if NFPA-13d has been adopted.
Officially, I'd have to talk to all our Codes Department, I know that is what we use for sprinkler systems, because our current regulation that we have in our subdivision regulations, if they're in residential homes...
Mm-hmm.
...do require that, uh, that particular regulation. I don't know if it's been officially adopted, 'cause I, I know we don't require sprinkler systems just outright, so I don't know if they actually adopt it, but I would have to defer to Mr. Jones on that.
Well, I'm just making a suggestion to you that, if you're gonna reference a, a code, then you need to be sure that your county commission has adopted that, that criteria. I've dealt with it before.
I mean, I, I agree. And, I mean, yeah, we'll, we'll check, I'll, I'll check with Mr. Jones on that, but I, that is the code that we do use for sprinkler systems, that do, uh, there are a few subdivisions even currently that do have sprinkler systems in the homes, and that is the code that is used to enforce that.
Um, and, and I'll just go back to the non-conforming thing, making sure we've done that. Um, and this is kind of on, yeah, I'm just trying to react to what, what he presented today, a lot of this. I'm still concerned about the comprehensive plan and whether, and how it may or may not conflict with Public Chapter 1101, which is the Urban Growth Plan, which goes back to a state law issue, and, uh, 'cause I'd heard compliance with state and federal laws at the earlier meeting.
Ca- comment on that from our consultant.
What is the concern, specific?
Urban growth areas under that, um, when you create the urban growth boundaries, Public Chapter 1101 says that you're going to identify the areas that are to be urban, right? Generally speaking, I don't have it in front of me, and that, um, anything urban then Generally speaking, I don't have it in front of me, and that anything urban then would be placed on urban growth boundary, and the balance of the properties within the nonincorporated areas would be rural. And we're creating nodes of villages of high-intensity development, and it states in there, I believe, that high-intensity development should be in the urban growth boundaries.
I don't know what your growth plan map looks like. Is the part of the county that you're talking about, is it classified on the growth plan as rural?
It is.
Okay. There's language in Public Chapter 1101 that says that rural areas are to be set aside for certain purposes, agricultural, open, low-intensity uses, and it says also something to the effect, and I'm talking off the top of my head now, are uses other than high-intensity uses intended to go in the urban growth zones. That means that, to me, that the county has to define what those are, and that was one of the original intents in 1101, was that each individual county and city would define what their growth limits are and what different kinds of uses are involved, and what is intense and what is not. The state law does not classify that.
Yeah, you wouldn't have...
And so, it's up to this planning process to determine what is intense and what's not.
Okay.
And quite frankly, I can add some to that, we've had several discussions among staff, as well as from the Director of the GNRC regarding this particular topic you're bringing up, we feel pretty comfortable that this plan and our zoning, everything is in compliance with Public Chapter 1101, because these comments have, this is not the first time we've heard those comments, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, that's a gray area, but thank you so much, and I just wanted to make a few points, one about the nonconforming thing, and then about how we arrive at absorbing 201,000 acres if we don't do something different, I just think that's an incorrect figure. I think it's more like 33,000 acres if you keep the same zoning classification, and 44,000 acres if you adopt the RL zoning classification, that will be absorbed by the year 2035. Well, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cantrell while he's up here, any clarification? Thank you.
I'd just like to say that that last statement he made is, to me, is huge. I want to know, somewhat closer, are we going to devour the 200,000 acres or the 30,000 to 40,000 acres, because that makes a lot of difference, you know, I mean, could you be ready to rebut that at the next meeting, Doug?
Yes, I mean, we're just, we'll just look at the plan, see what his rationale is.
I don't expect an answer right now, but that's five, six, seven times the amount of property, you know, and that's to, at least in my mind, the bedrock between, or the foundation for making a great deal of these changes is because the county was going to be literally devoured in the next 25 years with development, and if, and there's a wide discrepancy between the two mindsets here, and I would just, you know, so just, if we could discuss that at the next meeting and be prepared to, you know, and if you need to talk to Mr. Cantrell.
That's fine.
You all know one another, you can see, make sure you're both, where both of you are getting your information from. Mr. Chairman, I take it our next meeting on 13th of February, is that correct, Doug?
I believe, let me get my calendar out here.
13, 6 p.m. At the courthouse, and we'll schedule the next phase of this work session.
Right, well, I guess that begs the discussion as far as, again, we have no zoning cases, if you just want to do the work session, do you want to try to do it over here, would you rather do it, we usually meet in the courthouse, would you rather do it in the courthouse, or would you rather do it over here to continue the work session? I'll just leave that up to, for you to decide.
I would prefer we do it here, because you could hear a lot better.
Yeah, you can. Depending on how big a crowd we expect.
Let me ask you, what kind of crowd are you going to have?
There's no way to know that.
I can send down an RSVP.
Now, I'll keep with the understanding that this is still going to be a work session, this is not going to be a public hearing again, right.
Right, it is a public meeting.
It is a public meeting, yes.
And one of the reasons we started meeting at the courthouse was for public access, because it's limited here, so...
True.
Well, let's just do it at courthouse.
Okay, we can, I mean, we can do it over there just as easily, that's fine.
Personally, say do it at the courthouse, which says, it gives the opportunity that if there's several people want to come, the room would be there and the availability would be there.
And that's what we'll do, I mean, it's already reserved for that purpose anyway.
Placeless available at that point.
And we're going to have workshop regardless whether we have anything on the...
Right, I mean, we don't have anything, so, I mean, it'll just be a workshop, is all it's going to be, so...
Having it there would do away with a perception that we're trying to move it to somewhere more inconvenient or something like that.
True.
Okay, in your point about it's easier to hear, it's easier to look at things right here and talk, and then Mr. Cantrell and everybody right here, a little room off to the side if there is not a big crowd.
Sure, we can...
It would be a problem unless it would be a problem...
Well, we would have, yeah, for public notice issues for one, and for two, that table's only so big, I mean, to get all 11 around, and then there's very limited seating in 205, I mean...
Seven-member committee fills that table up.
Yeah.
205, do you agree, Mr. Chairman?
This would be better, prefer 205.
Yeah.
But they, now, they have made quite a few improvements to the sound system over there, and I know the microphones are a lot hotter than they used to be, they've put new equipment over there, so that, as far as hearing, granted, it's, the acoustics, you can only do, you can only do so much with what you got, but it is a lot easier to hear since they've made the improvements, at least I think so, since I've been over there.
Since it has the potential to draw a number of citizens, let us do it at the courthouse, maintain it at six o'clock.
Just start a normal meeting time.
Nothing changes, it will be just a work session.
Okay, that's fine, and I don't foresee anything changing, so that's all it should be.
Six o'clock on Monday, the 13th.
Well, and let me ask you, do we want to be as specific as to state that that workshop will pertain to Chapters Seven through, whatever, the last thirteen?
Well, I think, I think we just advertise it as it is a work session, I mean, I think, I think that you guys can continue on with where you left off, but if there's other discussion, what I would hate to have happen is is we're only going to discuss Chapter Seven through the end of the comments that we received, and if there are some additional comments on the first six chapters, then you say, oh, well, we can't address those, I'd just rather leave that open, you know, you can pick up where you left off, there's nothing that says you can't do that.
We're not going to have a 10-minute, like, a 10-minute highlight of what was discussed.
As long as we're not going to just repeat the last two hours of the discussion.
Right, yeah, I was going to, right, yeah, I don't see, yeah.
Especially the changes that are recommended.
Right.
We can at least highlight those.
Yeah, that wouldn't take long.
And then move on.
Okay, yeah.
Any new comments that might come in between now and then?
Right, and any new comments that come in between now and then, we'll do our best to, you know, address them now, as I've stated from the get-go on this, if you can get the comments to us as soon as possible, that gives us more time to respond to them adequately. If we get comments the Friday before, or if we get comments the day of, obviously, we're going to be hard-pressed to try to respond to those, so the sooner we can get them, the better, and that just goes for the public in general, if they have comments, the sooner we can get them, the better.
Last three weeks from my day, that's a pretty good little time for it.
Yeah.
Thank you everybody for coming.
Very good.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman.
You get to make that motion now.